Hello and good evening. Welcome to our Housing Authority for the City of Salem, calling this meeting for Monday, December 13th, 2021 to order. Would the recorder please call the roll? Vice Chair Stapleton.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Leung. Commissioner Gonzalez. Chair Hoy is absent. Commissioner Nordike.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
And let me circle back to Commissioner Leung. And Commissioner Gonzalez. Here's to be absent, thank you. All right, thank you so much. I'm going to ask, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Stapleton, I apologize, but at this point, we still just have four commissioners, so we need to wait for Jose to connect up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm back, Dan.
There we go.
Great, thanks, Jose. All right, I have asked Commissioner Nordike if she would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner Stapleton. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Anderson, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We do not.
Fantastic. And it is my understanding that we have nobody signed up for public comment, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Anderson, the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.2A, which has been pulled by Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you, second by Lewis. Is there any discussion?
Yes, it's a very big consent calendar, which now consists of the item 3.1A, which is the minutes from our last meeting. And that's all she wrote, folks.
Fantastic. Any discussion? Seeing none, would the recorder please call a roll? Commissioner Leung. Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Stapleton.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
And Chair Hoy is absent. All right, thank you. The motion passes. All right, so for tonight, we have no resolutions or public hearings, so I will move to Commissioner Lewis, if you would like to bring forward your item under Special Orders of Business.
Sure, I am moved staff recommendation on agenda item 3.2A.
Second.
All right, second to Phillips.
And if I could, real quickly, administrative use, I want to start this conversation by saying, for maybe the last time this year, that how much I appreciate all the work that you and your staff are doing. It's my true belief that you have a full plate, and here we are, talking again tonight about adding three servings to your plate. And I just, I appreciate it, I truly do. When I first heard of this intergovernmental agreement, I thought, great, we're going to be able to get a micro shelter on one of these three properties. And when I went to Gretchen Bennett, she said, no, it's in Polk County. So when I talked to one of the Polk County Commissioners, they said, well, it's the state of Oregon that has to give the okay. So we find ourselves in that position quite a bit lately. But we have an opportunity here with three houses to do tremendous, tremendous work. And my question really is, where will we be and how will we be housing folks in these three houses? Is it going to be families? Is it going to be apartments? I'm just curious what we're going to be doing with the three new houses that you've now taken over.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Uetz, I'm the Housing Administrator. Thank you for that question. We actually manage another site for the City of Salem, and we'll be running these three homes similar to the same location. We have one out in South Salem that we've done for nearly 10 years now. These three homes that were purchased were just in the beginning stages of this agreement, and we're working with staff, and they're actually pretty excited. It's always great to acquire some properties in West Salem, as this is a difficult location for us to find additional housing. We're working through the process right now to bring these homes up to landlord tenant code. And at that point, then we'll sit down and see what the best utilization, I anticipate families will be utilizing these homes.
Well, if I, if you can trust what you read on Zillow these days, it looks like the three of them are going to include 11 bedrooms, nine bathrooms, and a total of 7,768 square feet. That's a lot of room for hopefully as many, as many folks as we can get in those homes.
Absolutely. And I can tell you that one of the homes is very large, and very large homes is very difficult for us to acquire. And we do have some families that are in need of that size of housing, so we will definitely make the best utilization of it.
Well, I again want to thank you for all your efforts, and I'm glad to see that this is happening in West Salem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. If the recorder would please note that Commissioner Leung has joined our meeting. It's good to see you. Is there any other discussion on this? Let me change that. Is there any more discussion on this fantastic news? Okay, seeing none, could the recorder please call the roll? Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordike.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Stapleton.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Leung.
I missed what the motion is. Can I be clear what the motion is before I agree?
I'm sorry, can you please speak up? I can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
So. I can, I can hear you, Jackie. So we're voting on action item number 3.2A, which was pulled by Commissioner Lewis. It's the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Salem and the Salem Housing Authority for the Property Management Services, a city-owned property located those three addresses on Wallace Road.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stapleton. Aye.
Chair Hoy is absent, thank you. Okay, is that everybody? Motion passes. All right, we'll be moving on now to information reports. Ms. Uetz, would you like to start us off here?
Sure, thank you. So as you can see on the program management report, we actually made a milestone of today, because today actually marks the official closing day of Yaquena Hall and South Fair Apartments. This is a monumental feat that we're so excited to be able to share with you today, as we put in that program management report. That is 425 units since 2014, that we've been able to rehabilitate, provide additional housing, and just create better and more decent, safe, affordable housing for the community of Salem. So today, I can officially say that we have closed Yaquena Hall and South Fair Apartments, and we're very excited for this day. We do want to give special thanks to US Bank, NOAA for permanent financing, Oregon Housing Community Services, Oregon Health Authority, City of Salem Home, and CDBG, and I cannot even state the countless partners that we've worked through through the due diligence to make this project happen, and they've stuck with us for nearly five years to get this completed. So today is an exciting moment. We have provided notice to proceed, and we're ready to put the fences up and make Yaquena a beautiful place again.
Nicole, before you continue, I would like to add to that, because I think you'll probably all notice who she overlooked in her thanks, or her appreciation, or acknowledging their contribution, and that is the Housing Authority team. Nicole, under her leadership, and the team at the Housing Authority, they have kept this going. Their commitment to their mission has just continued to drive this forward through a great number of obstacles. So I want to add to that list of thanks and gratitude there, Nicole, my thanks to you and your team there.
Thank you, absolutely. We have a phenomenal team. Many hardworking members on the Salem Housing Authority team that have never given up hope on this project, and they've continued to see it through, and they're very excited today.
And we've had a great city legal team on this as well. When I've seen the number of documents that have gone back and forth and all the reading, I think Diane must have gone through probably 16 pair of glasses at this point. There's a lot of reading.
And, and just beside that, on another great note, we did celebrate this weekend shop with a cop, and we were able to assist over 360 kids through that program. That's a, that's a wonderful piece of little bit of normalcy that we've been able to provide back to some of our littlest residents at the Housing Authority. Not all 360 kids were from Salem Housing, but we collaborated with Marion County Housing Authority, and there was over 80 representatives from all of our local law enforcement agencies. So it's been a great week, a great weekend for all of us.
Yeah, it sounds like it. I have to second everything that Director Rutherford has talked about, not only for you, but for, for Dan and the legal team, and all the folks there at Salem Housing Authority. You guys constantly amaze me, and getting to know you and your program there is really one of the high points of being a city councilor for me personally. So thank you for all your work on this. And it is a fantastic weekend, isn't it? Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Looks like we're going to let you off easy tonight. Do you have anything else before we let you go?
The only other thing that we would like to notify everybody is that we do intend to have a professional team out that will be providing regular updates of the construction progress for both Yaquena Hall and South Fair. So if you look at our website, we have a page that is for development, and that team is dedicated to make sure that everybody can see update, regular updates of how this is going. And I would, I would take a look at what the beginning is, and then towards the end of how fabulous this project will turn out to be.
Will those folks be going to any of the neighborhood associations to kind of give updates as the, as the project goes along? Good. I would encourage that for sure. Well, thank you so much. Seeing nothing else, I believe that we are, Jim, did you have something? No.
Commissioner Stapleton, I think, or Commissioner Leung, I think, had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Leung?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Lewis, for trying to get Commissioner Stapleton's attention. And thank you, Dan, as well. Director Uetz, I just had two questions for you. One of them specifically about Section 8. Can you give an update, if you haven't yet, on how long the waitlist now is for Section 8? And the second question, I've asked this before, and I just wanted to ask again, for the security deposits assistance that's being provided. I understand that general public can apply for these funds on their webpage. Can you also give what the webpage link is, so people know directly where to find it?
Absolutely. So, yes, I will say, the Section 8 program, we always have a difficult time answering what the exact waitlist will be for Section 8. Many of that depends on our funding, what different special types of vouchers we bring into this agency. And I can tell you that we try to apply for everything that we can find feasible that will help this community, but within the market that we have currently. But we are stating we're averaging about three to five-year waitlist for the Section 8 program. And I know that seems like a very daunting number, but that anytime we bring in a new Housing Authority voucher programs, such as the mainstream or the non-elderly disabled, everybody is contacted on those waiting lists, which is why it takes a little bit longer for us to get those programs up and running. We have to go through all of our applicants to ensure that none of those currently on that waiting list qualify for this new program, and they're bumped to that program and brought up much faster. So we are trying to always bring in more innovative ways to help with our voucher program. But it is a slow and it's a very long waiting list, and we understand it. Everybody can apply for both the security deposit program and any of our apartment complexes and our voucher program on the Salem Housing Authority website at www.salemhousingor.com, and it's live 24/7.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. That's a wonderful question. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I believe our meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Bye. You can come back, Ari.
Mayor, we can't.
Good evening. We, that's okay. I like to practice it once without, no, I'm kidding. I want to call to order the city council meeting for December 13th, and if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Here.
Counselor Hoy, absent. Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay, I'm going to make several motions tonight with Counselor Hoy absent, so bear with me. I'm going to move approval of additions, deletions, and I'd also move to include 5A under presentations, Section 1.4. We'd be moving up a citizen who's, who would just be making a presentation. So I need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Stapleton. Okay, any questions on this? Thank you. The recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
My boy.
Counselor Hoy, absent. Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. We'll go to council and manager comments. Any comments from city councilors? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As all of you know, we've got a climate action task force that is proceeding to make recommendations that'll be at a later date to the city council. And one of the recommendations relates to tree coverage. Coverage of trees is an extremely important way to help remove greenhouse gases from the environment, to help provide shade, to help provide, stop sort of heat islands in the city. So it takes a long time to, for trees to grow that high. And I and other people on the council have heard about some issues with a property out in the south.
Counselor, I'm going to, I'm going to just stop you for a second, and I'm going to ask Mr. Powers to kind of interject here. We, we sort of agreed if this issue came up, this is one that's under investigation.
That's all I was.
Because of that, we wanted to be cautious about it.
That's all I was going to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry then. I just wanted to make sure we didn't go too far down this road.
You know, I happen to be a lawyer, and I understand that this is, this is way at an preliminary stage.
Well, that having lawyers is very helpful. Ms. Powers, you want to say anything about this?
Just to reinforce what, what Counselor Anderson said, and that is, the city will investigate the complaint. It is, it is an active code compliance case right now, and it will be fully investigated, and council will be, will be updated upon the completion of the investigation. That's, that's basically all I was going to say.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Just so the public knows, it's an ongoing investigation. We can't comment as counselors on it one way or the other, and the city staff will do its work, and we'll see what happens.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. So just, this is our last meeting of the calendar year, and I just want to emphasize once again, you know, the safety and efficacy of the safe and available COVID-19 vaccines, as I've done for the majority of this year. I think it's, you know, really important that if people haven't availed themselves to try to do that now, we're more and more likely to get back together indoors as we go through these holiday seasons. And then I don't want to forget to also plug just the regular basic stuff, which is the flu shot. They're mutually protective of each other. You know, getting all of your vaccines has always been demonstrated to be helpful, and it gives us more quality, healthy time with our families and loved ones. So I would highly encourage that as an emergency doctor.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of echoing a little bit of what Counselor Dr. Phillips has been talking about, not only about the flu shots, but I also received an email, looks like a little while ago today, that Oregon has now confirmed there's now three Omnicron variant cases of COVID-19 here in Oregon. Thankfully, not in Marion County or in the City of Salem, but just making sure that people are aware and, you know, continue to social distance. Please get the vaccine if you haven't yet, and when you're in large spaces, to please consider wearing a mask. We need to keep our people safe and our families safe, especially during the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. First of all, happy holidays, one and all. To those who've already completed your Hanukkah celebrations, happy Hanukkah to you. And to all who are celebrating Christmas, including my crazy family, I hope you have an excellent celebration this year. And all those who celebrate all the other holidays this year. I wish you peace and love to one and all. A couple points. If you are financially positioned to shop, I hope you will consider shopping local this holiday season. The City of Salem has done a lot to support local businesses impacted by COVID-19. We've sent out PPE, we've put out COVID grant opportunities, and I know that our peers on council have all voted in favor of supporting our community who've been impacted by the financial downturn. I went to the Salem Holiday Market with my father and sister just this past weekend, and they had over 200 vendors who all have locally made, grown, bottled, brewed, distilled, sewn, and other goodies. So please keep your eyes out for ways to support our locally grown entrepreneurs. And for those of you who have some time to give, it is getting extremely cold and wet out there. And I know that our Warming Network, which the city is a proud partner of, we need volunteers out there for our warming shelters. The colder it is, the wetter it is, the more likely people can get sick, the more likely people could get hurt. So if you have time to give this year, please consider doing so for our neighbors in need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I've got a couple things I want to mention. We did have the holiday tree lighting activity down at Riverfront Park. Really, the work of the Parks Department, if you haven't been by down there, it's absolutely a beautiful, beautiful situation. We set up, they really went all out. We had Santa show up in a fire truck and then a fire breakout. So Santa was on the run on Friday evening. And it was, it was a really, we had maybe 100 or so people turn out on a cold and blustery evening, so it was a lot of fun. We did have last week our first meeting under the MOU, Memoranning of Understanding, we have with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde. It was very productive. I want to compliment the work of our city manager, city attorney, as well as Kimberly Fitzgerald, our historic preservation officer. We had a really fascinating meeting. If you're interested in some of the things the city is up to relative to our relationship with the tribes, protecting a whole range of locations in the city, requiring, creating some really excellent work protecting sites, guaranteeing that sites are checked out before they are suddenly bulldozed. I know we're looking at trees tonight, but I'll tell you, this look at archaeology, what's under the ground is equally, if not more, important in many ways. And we're developing a tremendous cultural resource, and I hope in the future, I mentioned it to the group, that we can really look at numbers of exhibitions of the kind of materials we're finding, like at the Jason Lee House, and, and then tribal resources that have been found. It is very interesting. We have some zoning issues that will go on around this and development issues that I think you'll be seeing at various times. I've been asking about the kinds of protections these sites should have so that they can at least be explored before they're destroyed. Too much of that has gone on over the years, not just here, but everywhere in the United States relative to these incredible native resources. Last week, we had Project Turnkey. Counselor Nordike and I were there. This was the opening of the old Super 8 motel over on Hawthorne with 80 units. It's starting now with part of the units are housing some of the victims of the Sandy Am Canyon Fire last year. But we'll quickly be turning over as improvement of the building is completed, and folks who are still recovering from the impact of the fire in terms of their housing are housed. It will become a full-blown supportive housing project in cooperation with Community Action Agency. And I can't tell you how thankful we are for the support of the whole Turnkey project, and particularly State of Oregon, the Community Foundation. The governor was there, Max Williams from the Community Foundation was there. It was really quite good. It was a very good turnout and a very exciting project. And then just finally, I had a chance to go out this morning and take a tour of the Yaquena site. This is a project I've been involved in since sort of its inception a number of years ago. And it was just gratifying to get a chance to see the interior of the building before it gets fixed. And we have a tremendous project on our hands here that can, I, you can't underestimate the work of Nicole and her group. When you take a look at a building like this and see where it was and where it's going to be, and that's what I wanted to kind of experience. And I want to particularly remind the council, I don't think any of you were, well, Jim, you might have been here for this. The late Senator Jackie Winters played an enormous part in Yaquena, coming to the city. It's been a long, tortured trail for this thing to arrive here. But it really was Jackie Winters who helped us tremendously move this forward. She understood the desperate need for the kind of housing this is going to provide, including some targeting on mental health needs of a number of homeless residents that will be living there. So I just want to remind you and maybe just comment on the importance of her role, as well as other members of the legislature, including Peter Courtney. This has been, and Tom has been very involved in this, Anderson, in the early days of this, getting this put together, this whole project out there. But Yaquena, I think, is going to be a real, very, very important addition to our response to, to the needs of our unsheltered part of the community. So just wanted to point that out, and again, say thanks to, as I've said many, 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 many times over the years, to the late Senator Winters, who was a true benefactor to this community. Hey, anyone else? Thank you. Got no proclamations. I've got a couple of presentations I'd like to make. This is the fourth and final City Council Volunteer Recognition Award presentation. And I just want to tell you, I hope next year we can do this, or you, yeah, I guess we will still all be together. We can do this together. This, trying to, we ended up having me do a lot of them just for the scheduling. It was just a huge scheduling problem. And I really would like to see this occur in the old way, where each of you presented awards to residents of your communities. I've had a couple of you have been able to do that, but this is a way to do it, but it's not the one I think's ideal. So I hope we can, by then, if everyone listens to Dr. Phillips. So I hope we can, by then, if everyone listens to Dr. Phillips, we can maybe, maybe can meet again and recognize the volunteers in this community. Tonight, we have a video presentation of two special mayor's awards, the Vern Miller Award and the Willard C. Marshall Award. Both special mayor's awards are genuinely meaningful to me. First up is an award that I established just this year. It's the Richard Swire's Public Works Award. Richard was a longtime incredibly dedicated Public Works employee, who was a friend to many of us over the years. Sadly, he passed away in January 2020. I wanted to be sure his legacy and the work he did on behalf of the city was recognized. This year, I presented the inaugural award to Kevin Garcia, who was Richard's right hand for a number of years. Kevin has continued in Richard's footsteps by providing superior customer service to residents. I'm not sure if we have a presentation. There we go. Do we have sound for this one? Did city Here we go. The inaugural Richard Swire's Public Works Award is being presented to the Public Works employee who demonstrates a special commitment to their work in the field. Richard was a crew leader for water distribution and dedicated city employee for 20 years, who passed away in January 2020. Richard treated everyone like a friend. His cheer was absolutely infectious. He connected with customers and staff genuinely, earnestly, and with their best interests in mind. The first Richard Swire's AFSMI Public Works Award is presented to Kevin Garcia. Kevin is currently a crew leader in the Water Distribution Section of the Public Works Department and serves on the first responder team. His job is to be first to arrive and investigate a customer complaint or service request, which typically involves checking for water leaks, meter issues, sink holes, and water main breaks sometime after midnight, is often the way it seems to be. Kevin has worked for the city full-time since December 2007 in water distribution. However, he was a seasonal worker for two years prior in parks operations, wastewater maintenance and street maintenance.
When I arrived to the customer, I tried to answer their questions as best as possible. And if I can't answer it, I give them the right people to talk to, always leave them with a smile and comfortable that they're going to be taken care of that day or sooner or later. And never leave them without any questions unanswered. Oh, yeah, he was like a, like a father figure uncle. He was a same thing. He always left people with a smile on their face and reassurance that they were being taken care of to the top level. And that's how I should be too.
Well, this is a real special award for me personally in this volunteer recognition cycle of 2021. This is the special mayor's award to my dear friend David Beam. And really been looking forward to giving you this. For many years, David has developed relationships with local and state officials to ensure that Americans with Disabilities Act requirements are met and those with disabilities are treated with respect and equality.
Right.
Yeah. David acts as a personal liaison to city, county, and state of Oregon elected leaders and has served on numerous committees and commissions, including the Oregon Disability Commission. David has testified numerous times before Oregon legislative committees and can often be seen advocating for those with disabilities in the halls of the state Capitol, which is where we met.
What I want to do is make sure every disability person will get to the same thing I have got to city and the state, more volunteers and people like me to do it out there and show them how to do it statewide too. Thank you.
I want to, if I can for just a second, I'm going to introduce this one. The Vern Miller Award. The Vern Miller Award is presented in recognition for an individual's outstanding long-term service to the city. Two people, Barry Nelson and Ken Van Osgoel, received this year's award for their shared operational responsibility for the Jerry Frank Amphitheater Project. This was likely the most ambitious project undertaken by the Rotary Club of Salem in more than 100 years. Well, every year, we do the volunteer recognition awards, and the major award of the year is the Vern Miller Award. And I'm just thrilled to be presenting this to Barry Nelson and also Ken Van Osgoel. The Vern Miller Key Resident Award is presented in recognition of a person or persons, persons in this case, outstanding long-term service to the city can embody shared operational responsibility for the Jerry Frank Amphitheater Project, named in honor of our first citizen, Jerry Frank. This was one of the most, if not the most ambitious project undertaken by the Rotary Club of Salem in more than 100 years. Barry and Ken collaborated with the city of Salem, architects, and contractors at all stages of the build. They also raised revenue and led a task force overseeing the completion of this impressive project. Inspired by the native Kalapua open weave basket design, the amphitheater will provide the Willamette Valley with a performance venue that expands opportunities in which everyone can benefit from a new, broader range of cultural experiences.
Very much appreciate the recognition, though we certainly didn't do it for the recognition. And if I may speak on behalf of Ken, it's just an incredible opportunity, really, to have spent a good five-plus years in collaboration with the city and the many partners that brought this together in the city of Salem, from Dahlke Construction and CB2 Architects to certainly the Rotary Club of Salem and all its cadre of volunteers and contributors to this project. So thrilled that this can be enjoyed for generations to come in our community and be a real crowning jewel to our Riverfront Park.
And finally, I'd like to just take a second. The Willard Marshall Award is presented to a person who's contributed the most to the city during a given year. This year's recipient is Jimmy Jones, Executive Director of the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency and the Arches Project, a multifaceted program for housing instability and homelessness. Arches is under the umbrella of services of the Community Action Agency that Jimmy oversees. They've done amazing work and continue to work with partners and volunteers to help people navigate from homelessness to stable housing. This is the Willard C. Marshall Award, one of the major awards the city of Salem gives for service to the community. The award was established at the bequest of the estate of Willard Marshall. Willard Marshall was mayor of Salem from 1963 to 1965. This year, it really is an honor to present this to Jimmy Jones and the Arches Project staff. It's a recognition of the incredible efforts they've made on behalf of the community to address homelessness. The breadth of services and outreach offered by the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Center and the Arches Project is awe-inspiring. The goals of Arches is to help clients navigate from homelessness to stable housing, which, as everyone knows, is a big challenge here in Salem. In addition to providing housing assistance, Arches services a drop in day center, job fairs, Warming Center network, and other supportive services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the agency and the Arches Project, and especially the people that we serve in Marion and Poe Counties and the city of Salem, we are delighted to receive this award from the city. We've been involved in the public life of Salem since 1969, and we have served hundreds of thousands of clients in this community over the 52 years that we have been in existence. We are especially proud of the work that's taking place at the Arches Project. It is serving the most vulnerable members of our community and providing them with needed services and basic needs, and hopefully, over the long term, a pathway to end homelessness in Salem permanently.
Well, thank you. If that was a little clunky, it's because I did it wrong. So I apologize to the person who was trying to run the videos as I tried to explain what was going on. I have one other thing I just want to mention. I, this isn't award, it's just one of those things, I think, every once in a while, we need to recognize some special work. The Salem Police Department and Salem Compliance Officers completed really amazing feat last week at the Claggett Creek Natural Area. I know we've all been receiving emails about what's going on out there. Officers tagged 52 vehicles buried in the mud up to two feet deep. 26 of those vehicles were towed from the site, four of which were stolen. Despite inclement weather, at least two of the officers were there until well after dark. While city staff did amazing job, the vehicles that were towed would still be there if it weren't for the extraordinary efforts of Jack Conwell of Affordable Towing. He brought four-wheel-drive haulers and additional equipment to push and pull all but five of the vehicles out of that wetlands. Affordable Towing did all of this with no compensation other than any salvage value. But if those of you follow this closely realize there is not much salvage value in an abandoned trailer or car. The cleanup efforts continue at Claggett and other areas around Salem, and it's my sincere thanks to all who are so incredibly committed to making a difference in this area. This, I hope at some point, if any of you get a chance to visit with some of the folks who were on this project. It really, I ran into them leaving here Friday evening. A group, the Park Ranger and a couple of the code enforcement staff, and they just visited with me about what they'd been through over the past several days. And this was a truly enormous project, which Claggett Creek and that wetlands will recover from for the next couple of years. It was so bad. So I just wanted to be sure to mention it. Every once in a while, it's sort of like, what are you guys doing? Well, here's what we're doing, and particularly, here's what Jack Conwell of Affordable Towing really did for the community of Salem. Okay, and then I'm going to go to 5A. Just one second here. I've got to find 5A. It's a presentation from the Public Art Commission of their annual report. So who is up for giving the annual report?
Hi, this is Chris Darcy.
So Chris, okay, you're in, aren't you?
I'm on, my screen needs to be activated, but, oh, hold on. There we go.
Great.
And Heather Dimkey from Public Works will be helping me with the slides. So, good evening. My name is Chris Darcy. I am the current Chair of the Salem Public Art Commission. I live in Ward 7. And before I start, I just want to remind all of you that just three years ago to this day, many of us gathered on a bright sunny day in the city park, just north of the safe building, to dedicate the sculpture Good Sense, created by Lily and Pitt, artist from Warm Springs, and her collaborators, Sarah Lynn and Michael Hildy. It was an incredible commemoration to the passage of the bottle bill and a wonderful day for public art in Salem. So Heather, I'm going to ask you to share your screen so that we can run through our presentation. Let's go to the next slide. So I'm here tonight to tell you about the work that we do to use public art, visual art, to make Salem a better place, to build community and to create a place that is good for us to live, good for attracting business, and shared work that is reflective of our very diverse culture here in the city. Let's go to the next slide. We are established by code. We are governed by seven volunteer commissioners. I know that you'll be considering an appointment of another member tonight. Let's go to the next slide. And basically, we have three main purposes. We make recommendations on the acquisition of art for city facilities. We steward the city's public art collection, which, as you can see from our report, is significant. It's valued at over $1 million. There are over 100 pieces that date back to the building of the Civic Center now almost 50 years ago. And we manage the Public Art Fund. Let's go to the next slide. Again, and I didn't notice the icon until earlier this evening that our works of art are marked by a puzzle piece here. But, you know, the works were, many were given to the city beginning in 1972. This is a teak screen by Roy Setzel, a very well-established mid-century artist. It's actually quite valuable. Works are indoor and outdoor. And it's, it's, we collectively have a wonderful resource. Let's go to the next slide. In 2021, we had a number of interesting projects underway. The most significant was the seismic upgrade to the Salem Public Library. The library is home to a large bulk of the work that the city, the artwork that the city owns. We issued a public request for qualifications and responded to a number of artists. This piece is called Call Number Cascade. It is a massive sculpted metal relief by Eugene artist Amanda Wojcik. Her inspiration for the work was a series of waterfalls east of Salem in the Sandy Am watershed, near the Opel Creek area. Let's go to the next slide. We were also able to broker the donation of a large three-panel work called Trees of Life that was created by Betty Leduke, an Ashland artist who gifted this work to the city. And Betty is an artist who, for many, many years, has created large and small works that reflect cultural diversity, social justice themes. And this, I think, it is a beautiful piece, if you haven't seen it yet, and I think very appropriate for a gift at this time as we look at equity and inclusion and cross-cultural issues. Let's go to the next slide. You can see here just a couple of things. Again, the mayor just shared earlier a number of volunteer recognition awards. In the slide on the left, you can see him standing with several members of the Salem Public Art Commission and several members of the Salem Library Foundation Board, who were responsible for reinstalling over 80 works of art in the library. They also aimed at making the collection as accessible as possible, rewrote all the labeled copy, researched missing links, and really put in hundreds of hours of work. So I'm very, very pleased that they were recognized for their, for their effort here. The image in the center is, shows the new art hall at the library, which will be installed with a series of revolving shows that the library and other collaborators will propose. In addition to Amanda Wojcik's major piece on the sheer wall in the library, she created, she had a series of process pieces that she made as she developed the work in her studio. And we installed this exhibition so that and we installed this exhibition so that families, kids, and all of the diverse users of the library can understand what went into her design process for that major work. Below it is an image of Birds by a Portland artist, Tom Hardy. It was a piece that was over the old staircase in the library. It was reinstalled in a different location since the staircase was moved. Another one of our members, actually, the woman in the left image wearing the hat, spent hours trying to figure out how to reinstall this in the newly exposed concrete ceiling. At the convention center, I know I reported that we acquired a major painting by Richard Thompson last year. That work was finally installed this year because the convention center was closed, and they did some improvements with their new carpeting and so on. And then the piece, again, on the lower right, which I'll get to in just a minute, is our more focused attention on the Echo Earth Globe. And I have to say, my grand dog is making a cameo appearance on that walkway. Let's go to the next slide. We are, of course, dealing with continued maintenance need of the collection. The Drummer by noted sculptor Robert Hess, which was gifted to the city back in 1972, has some structural issues. There was undetected rust, so his drumming has been stopped for a while while we bring in a conservator to look at what he's going to need to be able to stand up again. And then we are looking at the potential. We hope that as we talk with you about how to really celebrate the 50 years of the Civic Center, that maybe we can find a way to reactivate the James Lee Hansen sculpture that is outside the library between City Hall and the library and the Peace Plaza. Let's go to the next slide. Looking ahead, there's both, there's a lot of good news, and, you know, we think that there is strong support in the city for more public art and more diverse cultural expression. You all know that the city will soon break ground on a new Public Works Operations Building that is going to be activating a site around 23rd, 21st, and south of Mission. We will be working closely with Public Works and Engineering on another RFQ for artists for a site, for public art inside and outside that building. So that's very exciting in terms of new construction. We are also, you know, as you know, the past year has been a tough one in terms of weather. That has not been good news for the Echo Earth Globe. And I think, as you also know, we brought in a conservator over a year ago to look at, do a condition assessment for the exterior of the globe. That person recommended a treatment plan. We have not had the resources to actually implement that plan yet, but our friends, our now good friends at the Salem Parks Foundation have approached us about their ability to mount a capital campaign to raise the funds to repair the Echo Earth Globe, raising up to $300,000. The total cost is estimated to be about $400,000. But now that that site, and as you know, just having just talked about the award, going to the Rotary Amphitheater, that end of Riverfront Park has been really activated in a positive way since the development of the Peter Courtney Bridge with the amphitheater, with the fabulous job that park staff does to maintain the natural environment. We're now seeing that it is possible to get the Echo Earth Globe restored. We're also in conversation with Kimberly Fitzgerald and the Landmarks Commission about landmark designation for the globe itself. So that's a work in progress. Let's go to the next slide. Is that my last one? Here we go. All right. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about anything I mentioned tonight or anything in our report.
Are there any? Thank you very much. That was, that was very good, really. I think gave us a real great vision of what's going on relative to fine arts in the city and some of the projects underway. Anyone have any questions or comments for Chris on this? Okay, great.
Great, well, thank you for having me here tonight.
Good, that's really, thank you so much. This is an area that we are all very, very proud of and really appreciate here in Salem. So thank you.
You're welcome. All right, happy holidays, everyone.
You too. Okay, public comment. Mark Wig, this public comment. Mark Wig? Let me make sure I'm doing this right. Yeah, I am. Okay.
Okay, I'm here. Thank you very much. Good evening. I just wanted to congratulate Public Works Director Peter Fernandez on spending all of the 2008 bond money allocated for buying Marine Drive Right-Away without buying all the Right-Away. The other projects identified in the 2008 bond measure were aggressively pursued and finished years ago. Because many projects were started immediately after the bond measure passed and when we were in a recession, many of the projects were completed under budget. Really good. Delaying the purchase of the Right-Away for 13 years, 13 years delayed, will cost the city millions of dollars. But Peter, you were able to settle a personal vendetta, and, okay, you won. Years ago, one of your emissaries told me that you were going to make sure that volunteers could not construct a path along the Right-Away for Marine Drive. At that time, the 3.2 million allocated for Right-Away purchase would have been enough to buy all the Right-Away from Cameo to Riverbend Road. I was promoting the use of the Right-Away as a linear park that would allow thousands of people along Wallace Road a more attractive and quicker and safer way to get downtown. Volunteers had constructed paths at Fairmont Park, Person Scenic Way, Right-Away, and Skyline Park. I had told the council that volunteers would have a trail constructed on the Right-Away within weeks of it being purchased. At that time, I opposed the third bridge that Peter Fernandez supported. Peter wanted to punish people that opposed the third bridge by delaying the purchase of the Right-Away. Congratulations, you have reaffirmed. Congratulations, Peter. You have reaffirmed that you run the city, not the city manager, not the mayor, not city council. You will not be held accountable for the decisions to delay Right-Away purchases for 13 years, a decision that will cost citizens of Salem millions of dollars. In addition to Salem's taxpayers, the losers also include those thousands of people who would have enjoyed the paths on Marine Drive Right-Away, Right-Away that could also have been used for community gardens by the adjacent apartment complexes. Paths and community gardens build healthy communities, add value to properties, encourage healthy lifestyles, and reduce pollution. People in Salem will probably never know what they lost, and you don't have to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mark? All right, that's the only public comment I have.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Mr. Wig, thanks for coming down, and, you know, I'm going to say I understand and appreciate your frustration about Marine Drive. It certainly is not what I had hoped it would be when I co-chaired the Streets and Bridges Bond Matter in 2008. So I think we share that frustration, but what's disappointing to me is your personal attacks. I view them to be inappropriate, unprofessional, and not meeting the standards of what we want to have here in Salem. And I think you could have gotten your point across without the personal attacks.
Right.
Could I respond?
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on then to the consent calendar. I'm going to move the consent calendar with one poll. Anderson pulls 3.3D. Need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Virginia. Second by Stapleton. Okay, just very briefly, the consent calendar includes a resolution to update the City of Salem Civil Rights Act Title VI Plan, direct staff to ensure community outreach, coordination, data analysis, removal of discriminatory impediments, and other features required by Civil Rights Act compliance. It includes the purchase of 2.72 acres of wetland credits from the Mud Slough Wetland Mitigation Bank. That sounds fun. For the Salem Business Campus. And it really authorizes the manager to purchase the 2.72 acres using $340,000 of unspecified 2122 Salem Business Campus funding for the purchase. There, it has an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Salem and the Salem Housing Authority for Property Management Services at city-owned property located at 1440, 1460, 1508 Wallace Road Northwest. You discussed this earlier at the Housing Authority meeting. It includes appointments to the Budget Committee, the Citizens Traffic Advisory Traffic Commission, the Downtown Advisory Board, Salem Cultural and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board, Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and Salem Planning Commission, recommended interviews, and the Salem Public Art Commission. So you will have a chance to do interviews with the candidates, or I believe two candidates you'll be interviewing later for the Planning Commission. And 3.3E was added. That's the legislative priorities. This is a list that's up, really aimed at the short session as well as the February short session as well, that sort of introducing some issues as well as getting us kind of lined up for them. This isn't exhaustive. This is just ones we think we can go in and begin to start work on these issues. And we have other issues that I know are on the table. One that is of particular interest of mine is Councilor Anderson's Rubber Tire Trolleys. I continue to believe that's a project that we can someday get ahead of, and I think Anderson and I are both looking at it. Could it just be in our timeline here on the council? It'd be, it's been such an interesting discussion. So those are the issues up. Any questions or discussion on those? Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly agree with you that we're looking for some sort of way to move people around with better mobility. I'm not yet convinced that it's a rubber tire trolley.
Okay, I'm sorry.
... system, but at some point in the future, we're going to have these discussions, and there are folks working on that right now that would make it much more easy for people to get around in mobility, and that'll be helpful.
Yeah. Good, good. I'll look forward. I hope we hear from the chariots at some point on this one. I'd like to hear their thoughts on this as well.
I've already heard them, and at some point, we'll be presenting them.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Councilor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had some questions about information reports, but that's not until a little bit later, correct?
Right.
Okay, just making sure I didn't miss anything. Thank you.
Yeah, this is just for these ones on the consent calendar. Anyone else? Councilor Nordike? Did your hand go up? Yep.
Yeah, just briefly, I was just doing a deeper dive into the legislative policy statements, and I'm generally on board with all of these, and I will be voting particularly for the four big items that you've identified in the main report. I do not personally support opposing legislation that would erode the Oregon Tort Claims Act, but that's, I'm just stating my position on that, and I know that that's not the top priority of this council, and I see that other priorities make a lot more sense for us, such as supporting affordable housing and getting more flexibility on state-owned property. My goodness, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that make an enormous difference? Because we, of all cities, have so much state property that is going unutilized right now. So I am really in favor of doing all that we can to support, be more innovative and creative with how we house people and find shelter on so much available land that is, has, pretty much thus far, people have been telling us no. Private owners, public owners, we've been getting a lot more no's than yeses, and so everything we can do to encourage folks to be partners, even on temporary shelters, which work, which are clean, which are safe, which are secure, which move people into shelter and out of shelter and into permanent housing in many cases, and into jobs and into services. So I am very much in favor of those things. Those are my comments. No questions.
Councilor, just one question for you. Which issue involves tort claims? I'd just be curious. I have a similar opinion of.
If you take, if you click on, it's under, if you go to the action item and you click on the 2022 Legislative Policy Statements, it gives the much more detailed description of legislative policy statements that apparently the Legislative Committee has agreed to, and one of them is specifically Oregon Tort Claim Notice. One second, I can, it says liability, quote, oppose legislation that erodes Oregon Tort Claims Act increases employer liability and legal defense costs or narrows recreational or discretionary immunity. So I don't support that, but that's just something I wanted to specifically call out. There's really, the way that we set up these legislative priorities is not really designed for the entire council to weigh in on every single one of these, but that one really jumped out to me, so I wanted to make a point of commenting on it.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy, absent. Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes, and we will move then to public hearings. And Amy, would you like to introduce our first public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the petitioner-initiated annexation of territory located at Ash Grove subdivision and adjacent lands. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will begin with staff presentation, and no individual signed up to testify. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm presenting the staff report for annexation case C741 for territory identified as Ash Grove subdivision and adjacent lands. I'd like to enter the staff report attachments and presentation into the record.
Right.
The subject property is approximately 3.3 acres that are located outside Right-Away of Hollywood Drive Northeast, and about 2,436 square feet of Right-Away in Hollywood Drive Northeast. It's contiguous to city limits on the south and the east. Because the subject property was contiguous to city limits and it's located in East Salem Sewer and Drainage District, a complete annexation application was required so that the property owner, Thomas K. Company, could obtain city services for a subdivision submitted as an application to Marion County. At the time, the territory was one parcel, and the annexation petition was signed by the single property owner. The application and annexation agreement were also submitted by Thomas K. Company, and the application was deemed complete. That annexation agreement... That annexation agreement, signed by the petitioner, runs with the land and binds subsequent property owners to complete the annexation. Staff notified the current property owners of the annexation hearing. The proposed annexation would create an enclave of three parcels. Staff notified those property owners that their properties may be annexed at a future date, and has answered questions from one of those owners. The Ash Grove subdivision was plotted in October 2020. It now includes 14 lots, a 50-foot wide cul-de-sac extension of Tiara Drive Northeast, and a 60-foot wide local street, Ash Grove Street Northeast. The annexation territory is designated single-family residential in the comprehensive plan map. Adjacent properties are designated either single-family residential or multifamily residential. The subject property and adjacent properties are zoned Marion County urban development. Other county properties nearby are single-family residential or RM, multifamily residential. In the city, the nearby properties are zoned either RA, residential agriculture, or RS, single-family residential. The territory will automatically be zoned city, single-family residential upon annexation, and that's consistent with the single-family residential comprehensive plan designation. Nearby properties are developed with single-family dwellings, apartments, manufactured homes. The single-family dwellings are duplexes in development. The subdivision are either completed or under construction on those 14 lots. The subdivision also includes an intermittent stream that was realigned during public construction, and also water quality swells between the sidewalk and the street or near the sidewalk. Staff found that the proposed annexation meets the annexation criteria, including whether it's consistent with comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals. It allows orderly, efficient, and timely provision of urban services, and it serves the public interest. Public Works said adequate facilities are available and no urban growth area development permit is required. It's within 0.5 mile service area of McKay Community Park. Fire response time from Station 8 would be approximately 4 minutes 30 seconds, and Finance Division Department reported that the total tax rate would increase for each property. Salem Kaiser School District commented that the development would provide about six students to adjacent school districts, and those would be eligible for transportation to Scott Elementary and Walden Middle School, and they're within the walk zone from McKay High School. Marion County Public Works commented that the subdivision is not out of its warranty period for road improvements, and they notified us that the original owner, Thomas K. Jr., must replant or salvage some of the bioswell plantings along Tiara Drive Northwest. We didn't receive official comments from North Lancaster Neighborhood Association, but we did receive questions from the chair. The first was, will the city maintain those water quality swells? And that is true, the city will own and maintain those public stormwater swells and the infrastructure after the annexation. The other question was, will the city enforce parking signage? Because there have been some problems with excess vehicles parking and other vehicles not being able to get through on some of the streets. After annexation, city parking services would have the authority to enforce the parking restrictions that should be signed on those streets. This is another voter-exempt annexation, and that means that the petitioner submitted, the, the single owner submitted the petition, it's within the urban growth boundary, subject to comprehensive plan and contiguous to city limits. And although it may not be referred to voters, council does retain authority on whether to annex the territory. And staff's recommendation is that council adopt Order Number 2021-6 Annex determining that that proposal meets the criteria, and it applies city zoning for the territory and approves withdrawal from the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District and Marion County Fire District Number 1. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, I have no one signed up from the public to comment on this. So, do, does anyone have any questions for Pamela on this, on this proposal?
I do, Mayor, this is Virginia, I'm not sure if you can see me.
Yeah, I can now.
Thank you, um, so when I look at the map, I see that, um, location kind of, there's, there's a, a property that will be surrounded by, uh, city-owned property within city limits. So does that automatically annex that property in the middle?
That property with, there are three parcels, there are two owners of those parcels. And at some date in the future, the city will evaluate the enclaves throughout the city and determine which ones we could send to the voters for annexation approval. I've looked at this one, and we do have a state law that says that if more than 25% of the boundary is roadway, that we aren't able to annex it as an enclave. So the entire territory, in my estimation, would not be eligible based on that reason. But say if the southernmost parcel, if that person petitioned and annexed on their own, it may be, we may be able to annex the enclave or one of the parcels as an enclave at some point in the future. So this is a project that we'll be looking at and planning in the next several years.
Thank you, very interesting. Love all these little things that come up, we learn more and more.
Right.
Very good, anyone else have any questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to move staff recommendation. Second, thank you, Tom, Councilor Anderson seconded. I talked with Counselor Hoy, and he would like to have this moved forward, so I'm going to ask you to join me in supporting that. Okay, in just, in further discussion? All right, if the recorder please call a roll.
Councilor Hoy is absent, Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leon?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes, we will go to the next public hearings. Amy, you want to introduce that one?
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing to receive testimony regarding proposed solid waste management service rates. The hearing will begin with staff presentation. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Zink, you're the pro from Dover on waste?
Good evening, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mayor and City Council, thank you, my name is Ryan Zink, I am the franchise administrator for the City of Salem. During this public hearing, I'll be presenting the solid waste rates proposal. Uh, the recommendation for this public hearing is to approve the proposed solid waste rates found in Resolution 2021-49, which will be effective January 1st of 2022 and January 1st of 2023. The high-level summary of the propose, of the proposal includes the addition of 95-gallon residential service, uh, no increase in 2022, and only an overall increase of 2.59% in 2023 for Salem, Marion County, and no increase in Salem Polk for either year. Hollers requested that 95-gallon residential service be added as a new service. Current residential service is only available in 20, 35, and 65-gallon sizes for trash. With more people working from home, customers are asking for larger carts or an additional cart for trash. The closest equivalent service to the 95-gallon is a 65-gallon, uh, trash service with, with an additional 35-gallon cart, which would currently cost $57.95 in Marion County and $44.35 in Polk County. The proposed 2022 rates for the 95-gallon service in Marion County and Polk County would be $49 and $42 respectively. The addition of the 95-gallon residential service will be a savings to customers who need more service and would reduce pickup times for haulers. At the beginning of the rate review process, Salem's haulers submitted to the city their recently completed financials and year-end projections for the current year. Based on the financial submitted, the haulers requested an increase in 2023. Following this request, the city engaged Marina and Company, the city's solid waste consultant, to review the haulers' financial statements and to perform what's called a cost-of-service analysis, uh, which is an analysis of how much it costs to provide the service to customers. As part of the city's review, the haulers' revenue and expenses are tested to make sure that they are reasonable and accurate. Next, we estimate what the future revenue expenses will be and estimate the haulers' pre-tax return on revenue or income. Then the proposed rates are calculated to allow for a 10% pre-tax return. Out of the 10%, approximately 3% is paid in taxes by the haulers, with the balance going to owner profit and reserves that are necessary for a capital-heavy industry. Starting with disposal, the next few slides will cover the cost factors considered. Disposal costs for garbage in Marion County are not changing, while Polk County is experiencing a $3 per ton increase each year, an average of approximately 8.2% annually. Mixed organics, uh, which include yard debris and food waste, is also seeing an increase of $5 per ton each year, an average of 7.5% annually. The economics of processing recycled, recycled material continues to play a significant role in the overall cost of solid waste service. The amount haulers receive as revenue or pay as an expense is based on the cost to process the material, offset by the value of what it can be sold for. Until the abrupt change in the recycling market in 2017, haulers received revenue which would help to offset subscriber rates. The net price per ton is represented in this graph, which shows how dramatically it changed since January of 2017. At the lowest point, haulers in Salem paid as much as $112 per ton. Fortunately, 2020, uh, excuse me, 2021 has seen a turnaround, and, um, and in September, haulers received just over $29 per ton. For the purpose of the financial projections, we are assuming haulers will receive an average of $26 per ton over the next two years. The other cost factors considered include things like fuel, which is uncertain and can vary greatly. Labor and medical insurance are based on recent activity. However, difficulties in hiring CDL drivers could push costs higher. General inflation is seeing an increase, but is projected to level out. And both delays in supply chain and recent increases in steel prices impact the ability to order carts, containers, vehicles, uh, which are all crucial to the haulers' operation. This is something the haulers are keeping a close watch on. This slide shows the results of the cost-of-service analysis, showing the pre-tax return on revenue last year in 2020, the projected returns for the end of this current year, and the forecasted numbers for '22 and '23. The return on revenue for Salem's haulers within the two zones are broken out separately because there are some notable differences in rates and variations in cost drivers used to calculate the return on, uh, revenue, such as disposal fees and transportation costs. With the increase council approved in 2019, and the unexpected turnaround in the recycling market, the haulers are projected, uh, to end the current year with a combined return of 11.7%. Similarly, we're folk, uh, forecasting a 10.1% return by the end of '22, and then 8.1% in 2023. Now that 8.1%, of course, is, is made up of the 9.9% in Polk County, and 7.9% in Marion County, which is why we're, uh, seeking, uh, uh, an increase in 2023 for Marion County, but not Polk. Here we have the proposed rate increase by service in Marion County. Uh, for 2022, again, no proposed increase at all. For 2023, uh, proposal is a 4.2% increase for cart services. Uh, container services would see a 2.07% increase, and then the drop box rentals would be no increase, um, with an overall combined increase of 2.59% for 2023, and again, no increase at all for Polk County's own, uh, for either year. This slide shows the impact of the proposed increases to the subscribers of cart services in the Marion County zone. As these figures represent a two-month bill, uh, in 2023, a subscriber of the 35-gallon service in Marion County would see an increase of $2.70 every two months, or a total of $16.20 annually. Additionally, just, uh, for the sake of demonstration, um, we see the proposed bimonthly rates for the, the new proposed 95-gallon residential service for both Marion and Polk County. When comparing the residential rates, um, monthly garbage rates for 35-gallon month, oh, excuse me, 35-gallon rollcar services to the current rates in other Oregon cities and those with similar services, the rates in Salem remain consistent with comparable cities. It is also important to note that, uh, the haulers in Salem do provide several services not available in many other communities, such as, uh, curbside food waste collection and curbside recycling of motor oil, antifreeze, latex paint, cooking oil, and household batteries. In response to questions from councils, I'd like to just briefly talk about a concept called pays-you-through, but we'll keep it short considering we do have a full agenda this evening. Pays-you-through, as, as defined, is unit pricing or variable rate pricing. Residents are charged for the collection of municipal waste based on the amount that they throw away. Now, in, uh, and to help understand what pays-you-through is, it's also helpful to understand what pays-you-through is not. So the opposite of that is a system which residents pay for waste collection through property taxes or a fixed fee regardless of the waste generated. Uh, most communities, uh, Oregon communities, excuse me, including the City of Salem, are currently operating within a pays-you-through model. I won't go into the detail here, and I'm happy to, uh, talk more later during the Q and A, but, uh, what's described here as wheelie bins, what we call carts, um, is the model that, uh, the City of Salem currently operates under. The haulers provide several non-standard services, um, and one I wanted to share with you tonight is, uh, the on-call service. For customers who produce very little trash, the option of, of on-call service is available. Customers would receive a 35-gallon cart for trash. This does not include recycling yard debris, that could be added, um, uh, as an additional service if they desired. And what, what would occur is they would call their, their hauler when they want to have it picked up, and it would be collected on the same day as the regularly scheduled, uh, regularly, uh, regular weekly service in that area. Uh, so the customers charge for each pickup rather than a monthly rate. Also, as a reminder, anyone who qualifies for the City of Salem Utility Rate Relief Program, which is a discount on their wastewater bill, also qualifies for a 10% discount on their residential garbage bill. Uh, to promote the program and provide assistance to more residents, staff is working with the Midwamit Valley Community Action Agency and the haulers to provide more outreach for this program. In conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2021-49, establishing new solid waste management service rates. If adopted, uh, by the City Council, rates listed in Attachment 2 would go into effect January 1 of 2022, and rates listed in Attachment 3 would go into effect January 1st of 2023. And subscribers will receive a 30-day notice of rate changes from the local hauler. And I can never, uh, pass up an opportunity to share some of the, the information about recycling, right? That when we are recycling, we want to keep it, uh, our plastic and metal containers empty, clean, and dry. Uh, on the Marion County's website, there's also information about recycle guide. Uh, if there's an, an item that people don't know how to recycle, you can enter that item in there, and it'll give the best, uh, way of either recycling or disposing of that. And finally, um, I haven't talked about this much before, but, uh, mrtrashrecycles.com is actually the website for, uh, our, our Midvalley Garbage and Recycling Association. Um, and out on there, there's a great tool, it's a curbside collection tool, it's an app that you can download on your phone or you can access online, um, that provides three really, uh, crucial things, I think. One is a, a collection day, uh, reminder, it'll tell you, you know, we have recycling one week and, uh, recycling, no recycling the next week, it'll tell you what I was going to put out that day and give you a reminder for your collection day so you don't forget. It also includes, uh, that recycling wizard, that recycling guide, it's a, uh, same type of information there. And finally, um, is a, report a problem with your hauler. So, really, the, the, under the question mark out there, um, there's a, a link you can click there. Uh, it'll provide your, your. Uh it'll provide your your address, your uh uh email address and submit your question, and that that's monitored by two staff at Midvalley, uh the the haulers' association. And they will do their best to help resolve any questions or concerns you might have with your hauler that way. And that uh concludes my presentation. I just want to let you know that um uh Tanya Moffett uh from Marina and Co., who is the city's Salem uh waste, excuse me, solid waste consultant, has also joined us this evening, and we are both available for questions following public testimony.
Hey, thank you very much. Uh we'll move then to uh public testimony. I have only one person signed up, uh Phil Carver.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh I represent three fifty Salem, uh Oregon. Um first, I'd like to note that we're disappointed, very disappointed that there's not a date been scheduled for a public hearing on the Climate Action Plan. You schedule dates for many events out many months, and it's disturbing to us that you have not done so. There's no other activity scheduled for the Climate Action Plan, and you should schedule a date as soon as possible. And I brought this up in testimony at the last council meeting. Her haste isn't needed here. Um the second com- the comment about this was related to this is that there's no consideration of climate in this proposal. We've petitioned for more pay-as-you-go differentiation, particularly having people uh have the option of having every other week service, or maybe even investigating shifting to the garbage being collected every other week like the recycling is. Um the food waste should not go into the trash, and so if your trash smells from food waste, it means you're not putting it in the proper container. So we would request that that this issue be taken up, as we asked last year, and it was not, to several staff and council members, that the um that and not lock this in for two years, um but postpone the ninety-five-gallon issue for a comprehensive look at making it more pay-as-you-go for the future, um and for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Also, uncertainty, I'm concerned I'm concerned that locking in rates for two thousand and twenty-three with all the uncertainty um is ki- it doesn't seem to me to be a very wise thing to do at this time. Um so that's that's my testimony, and um I appreciate all the work that the council members do. Um and uh but I think that we are, we are not implementing the Climate Action Plan. This is an example. This this issue of reducing waste is an element of the Climate Action Plan, but we're not doing it. Um and except to a very minimal amount, the diff- the differentiation in cost between the twenty, thirty-five, and sixty-five-gallon barrels is pretty minimal. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Uh Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thanks for coming down. Mister Carver, it seems like we see you almost every meeting, which uh as I I appreciate your civic involvement. Uh I presume you heard the um presentation by Mister Zink. And uh if you did, I'd like you to respond a little bit to what he says about pay-as-you-throw, that in effect, we already have a pay-as-you-throw system, and and I'd love to hear your response to that and how if your idea of pay-as-you-throw differs from um what the staff presentation was.
I agree that there is an element of pay-as-you-throw in the current system, but the cost differentials are very minimal, and there are not a lot of options in terms of the times of delivery. Um and I think we should consider by uh every other week, pick up for garbage and encourage people to put their food waste into the organic compost. Um food waste in a in a landfill, as where Polk County wastes go, is very bad for methane emissions. So I think we need to really focus on the climate aspects and more pay-as-you-go um elements than we're are than currently exist.
Mister Mayor, if I could follow up with one more question. Um uh Mister Carver, I I know that there's been a lot of concern about Covanta. I wonder if you could address the issue of Covanta burning garbage. Um uh particularly with respect to what might happen if we don't send or through the county, don't send garbage to uh Covanta to be burned. Would somebody else come in and and give guard some other en- uh public entity actually then use Covanta for uh uh burning the same amount?
Um I don't, i- if all of Marion County waste did not go to Covanta, that would not guarantee the closure of Covanta there. Authorized to take out-of-state and even out-of-country wastes, really um uh very unusual industrial waste, according to the Salem um Statesman Journal newspaper, um from from public reports. Um as far as the climate emissions, um I don't think, I want to go into that right now. In the long term, landfills are better than burning the waste because of the plastics. Plastics in a landfill don't decompose and don't add carbon, but if you burn the plastics, obviously, the carbon goes in the atmosphere. There's a lot of toxic issues with respect to Covanta that are in being resolved now with the Department of Environmental Quality. I think that's all I should say.
Thank you very much, Mister Carver.
Thank you for asking.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and uh Counselor Anderson uh beat me to it. I was gonna ask you also about the pay-as-you-throw, because, yeah, I understand, we have a very basic component of it. So the other question that I would have for you, um I noticed that material submitted by someone else who provided public testimony talks about every other week or sometimes even a monthly cart being available. And that's in the public testimony for those following along. But there's a chart that compares the city of Salem's garbage service to Vancouver. And I was struck by the fact that in Vancouver, you can sign up to have monthly garbage service, every other week service, or weekly serviced. Uh what are their climate benefits to having monthly or every other weekly service for uh, you know, rate payers?
Um it would reduce the amount of diesel uh or other fuels burned to pick up the trash if it was commonly used, or if it was made universal. Um I'm not proposing it being universal at this point. I'm just asking that be investigated. That would reduce the costs of picking it up and reduce the environmental impacts of picking it up. Um and the other aspect is that if people um put their food waste in their trash bins, it will smell after two weeks. So this is, this will be a little little message from the environment saying, no, no, the food waste goes into the organics, and I would continue to support weekly pickup of the organics um to encourage people to put their garbage, their food garbage, their waste, food waste into their organic container.
Right, and I agree that, you know, monthly service or every other weekly service is not going to be suitable for a number of households, but it's not even an option here locally, and that's what I'm kind of intrigued by. What would it look like if those were an option? And would they be widely adopted? I would be curious to see what kind of a potential emission reductions would result, but without currently offering that, it's it's pretty speculative at this point, so.
Thank you.
Your testimony greatly appreciated.
Thank you for your questions.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Mister Carver, and we'll move to questions for Mister Zink or Miss Moffett. Counselor Nordike?
Sorry about that. Did I mute myself? I hate when I do that. But sorry, city staff, my apologies. Uh Mister Zink, um do we have a webpage that clearly spells out how low-income seniors and low-income persons with disabilities can sign up for the reduced garbage service? Your slides were really helpful, but I would love to get the word out to people in my ward about that, because I suspect uh there's some people I know who don't know about that, and that would be something I would very much like to 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 extend to them.
So I I'm embarrassed to say that we don't have a very good presence on our own city website uh for this program. But that is one of the aspects of of uh working with the Community Action Agency and the haulers in getting a a better presence um with that information. Uh it became clear uh in some of the work that I was doing uh this last uh last couple of months that we, while we have quite a few people taking advantage of the wastewater uh or our own utility discount, that we don't have uh nearly as many people taking advantage of uh this discount, and so thought I'd uh get ahold of the folks at Community Action Agency first, since that is the gatekeeper, if you will, and and they are the ones who qualify us uh customers for the utility program. And so as they are going through that um that qualification program at Community Action, Community Action Agency, they will be made aware of the the qualif- qualification for this program as well.
Thank you, because I'd love to push that information out as soon as you've got it packaged up nicely. I I want to spread, help you spread the word. Thank you.
Will do. I'll let you know. Thank you.
Mister Powers, can can our communications staff get in touch with Mister Zink and figure out how to push this out through the city website a little a little more aggressively, uh other than just through community action, but get that broader reach? There seem to be good, good materials available, but it's just not getting into the right hands, maybe.
Yes, certainly. Yes, we certainly can.
Thank you. I I think that would help too. Okay, anyone else? Tom?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I guess my waving hand is better than the little yellow hand up in the corner. Uh uh Mister Zink, thanks for this presentation, and uh thanks for meeting with me and other counselors um at various times during this to discuss it. I've got a couple of questions. I'm interested if you know the historical average of pre-tax returns. You've get just given us the past couple of years, and they kind of fluctuate between high single digits to low double digits, and I I I, is there any kind of broader perspective on what the the haulers have received pre-tax uh other than just the current several years, current few years?
Yes, actually, I have some data here that goes back to two thousand and thirteen. Uh in the interest of time, I removed that as one of the slides this evening. Appar- apparently, I should have left that one in. I apologize.
Yeah.
Um I will say that this is the the first year in uh since two thousand and thirteen, and again, I don't have prior to two thousand and thirteen here. This is the first uh time since two thousand and thirteen that the haulers are actually uh receiving and meeting that ten percent. Um we uh in two thousand and eighteen, there was a combined rate. The low was five-point-six percent, and that was right after uh the change in recycling market, and we weren't able to react quickly enough to help them uh meet that, meet that target. But uh the average, I would say, looking at this, um it it, you know, there's, we're around the the eight to to seven to eight percent during that period of time.
Okay, and just so it's clear, this is pre-tax revenue, not post-tax revenue, so.
Correct.
You 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 get your profit, and then you have various expenses that you might take off on your corporate tax return. Then, uh if you could um um give me some kind of general idea about the each pickup versus the monthly rate. So if you say you want to pick up every other week or call them every other week, how does that relate to what you're paying if your garbage is picked up every single uh um every single week?
Right, so the on-call service, uh which is a trash-only service, um it it's a, would be a thirty-five-gallon cart, which is the size that most people do use today anyway. But if they sign up for that, um then rather than being on a a weekly schedule of ha- of having that picked up, the customer would need to call their their hauler, and then on the the week that they want to have that picked up, they would then put it out by the curb, and then uh because they've then notified the hauler, uh they'll then be charged for that one time that is picked up, and then not charged until the next time it's picked up.
Well, I understand that, sir. What I want to know is, if you, if if you're, if you're paying uh eleven dollars and whatever it is per haul, how much are you paying if you pay for the same amount of the same size of of can if you do it every week?
Oh, excuse me. Okay, so um I apologize.
No, that's fine. Maybe I didn't ask the question the right way.
So for the the same uh thirty-five-gallon cart.
Sure.
Uh that same size picked up weekly would be uh uh thirty-two dollars and five cents um e- every every month. Uh the the bi-monthly bill is at sixty-four dollars and ten cents.
So if what you're really saying is if you do less than three, you're ahead of the game on that in terms of what your rates are.
Right. There is also the aspect, though, that the the regular service does include your yard debris and recycling bin as well, where the and so that's an additional cost that's that's included in there.
Okay, so if you just have the 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 pickup when you call, you can't every week put out your reci- every other week your recyclables and every week your yard debris. You can't do that.
Not for that rate. You could pay a little bit extra and have that service added on as well.
And then finally, uh this slide on the rates for the ninety-five-gallon uh behemoth, I I didn't quite see that. Uh uh well, I saw it, but it went by too fast to figure out what it was. If you could pull up that slide again.
Uh absolutely. Uh I will uh pull it up and share my screen.
Maybe I should call it the monster can.
Let's see here. Screen two. So on the the bottom here, a bottom line for each of these, uh I apologize, this is in, this is the two-month uh rate, but it would be uh uh forty-nine dollars per month or ninety-eight dollars for each bill on the two-month uh in Marion County. Uh forty-two dollars a month or eighty-four dollars each each bill, each two-month bill for the ninety-five-gallon in Polk County.
And the rates that are proposed, I I I I guess I see the sixty-five-gallon is eighty-three for two months. Okay, I understand that, so that's uh, that's a little bit of a jump. Okay, um I I just also want to say I I appreciated meeting not just with you, but in past years I've met with the Garbage Haulers Association, and they were very helpful in uh getting an idea of what really goes on uh in our uh garbage services. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, um just a quick question, Mister Zink, the the ninety-five-gallon container. If if the, if most people are using the thirty-five gallon, I have to assume that there's enough people that are using two containers, whether a sixty-five and thirty-five or a sixty-five and twenty, to necessitate going up to the large, but I'm curious, how many people are using more than one container?
Certainly is not a majority of people, but there are um enough people, um as you mentioned, especially with folks working from home, to bring this up as an issue, and in a in a way of kind of a twofold, one, for those that are currently at a sixty-five gallon that are looking at increasing more, uh having a little bit uh more capacity, um rather than adding that thirty-five gallon, uh moving up to a ninety-five gallon does save them some money. Um and then also saves on the uh on the pickup time and uh and and the overall uh time of of the uh of that route. Um I I don't have uh numbers in terms of how many people are on. Uh I have the multiple carts, but it's, it was enough that the the haulers have have come forward and asked for it.
Okay, any, yes, Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um and thank you, Ryan Zink, for the excellent uh presentation. It was well organized. Um so I I'm trying to phrase my question here. What would you say to the the people like uh Mister Carver who came in uh presented tonight um and who've reached out to us uh in written testimony that feel that there's there's not enough of um a discount for people with a smaller receptacle, and there's not enough of, you know, maybe a penalty for people with larger receptacles? Is it within our rules to kind of discriminate in that way? Or are are there rules that we have to follow that we're not really in control of?
Uh sure, so uh our our code um uh uh sets up, sets up um a a process of of setting the rates with that or cost base. Um and so with that, um excuse me, there's a certain fixed amount of cost of the trucks driving down the road, um and and the whole process and administration and and ironically, or unfortunately, the the um amount of the disposal is a fairly small piece of that. Um and so we would need to look at a a a took a different way of 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 structuring our cost analysis process in order to look at that. Um it's certainly something we could do with council direction down the road. Um but within our current uh uh code and the 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 policies that have been set within or for um our our rate review process, that uh system falls outside of that existing rate review process. Hopefully, I answered that question. I don't thi- I don't feel like I did, but uh.
I think you started. I think you did a good job. It's a difficult question. So if people don't understand, I, we can really only charge what it So if people don't understand, uh, we can really only charge what it costs to to provide the service. That's my understanding. And one of the the biggest thing is the fixed cost of having, you know, the garbage truck show up every week predictably to, you know, have the connection to pick up your garbage. And the relatively smaller cost is how much you're actually disposing.
Right.
So we really have to change things upstream to be able to influence that. Um, so, you know, this is, it's, this stuff is complicated, but I appreciate you taking the time, um, Mr. Zink, to to meet with me, uh, and go over my questions ahead of time. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Counselor Nordike.
Uh, unless there's anyone else who hasn't already spoken up.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Zink, I know you you, we all get inundated with public testimony at every single one of these, so I don't know if you had had an opportunity to take a look at. The information sheet that I referenced earlier. But I I think for the two thousand twenty-three rates, uh, we have time. From my point of view, to consider whether this is the only way. That we can both, you know, address the basic profitability levels of the garbage haulers. But also do a pay-as-you throw system that actually incentivizes people to use less. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at that or to, or if councils ever asked you to look at how. The City of Eugene or the City of Vancouver conduct their garbage rates, but it looks, it looks like they're quite different. And I don't know if we've ever told you or or given any direct, received any direction from council to consider doing things differently. To incentivize waste reduction, save money, especially for people at the margins for whom the garbage service is essential. You're gonna pay that bill until you can't pay anything else. Um, so anyway, I'm just wondering, have we ever told you to take a look at how Eugene or Vancouver are doing that?
There are aspects of of certainly the Eugene's model that we've looked at. Um, I I I don't recall, uh, specific direction from council to. Uh, do a full comprehensive look at that. Um, uh, but speaking of of Eugene, you know, there certainly are some aspects of that that that, um, in terms of every other week or the weekly, uh, cart service that, uh, we've reviewed and looked at. Um, one of those pieces and and the public testimony that was provided tonight, I think speaks directly to that. Is that there is an asterix associated with those non-weekly services. And that those are only available for what they call non-putrescible waste. Um, and if you look at the root word of that, that's putrid. Um, and I think that speaks exactly to what what he was talking, what are, um. What, uh, the the testimony was this evening. And so I I think there are some, some, uh. Uh, multiple elements, um, that we would want to be looking at. So if we, if we do one with the, you know. Uh, providing just the every other week or our monthly service without also addressing some of the other issues, then we're going to be, um. Uh, in ending up with, I think, unintended consequences.
Okay. Okay, any, any, oh, Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Um, I think this question is actually for Tanya and I'm hoping that you can help me better understand where the haulers are coming at. Um, and as you know, we've passed the climate resolution. We have climate goals. We, um, are working towards a very. Um, aggressive climate goals, um, as a city. And I think what I'm looking for from you. And from the haulers is to know that I have a partner in that. And so I'm hoping that you can speak a little bit about what the haulers are doing to address climate change. To address the many issues that we all face together as a community. Uh, because I know that they care about this. I used to work, uh, for Valley Recycling and so I know that there is a lot of care about this topic and. Uh, they are very educated in it and know what they're doing. Um, but I would just, I would like to know that I have a partner. So can you tell me a little bit about what they're doing to address climate change and how they can partner with the City of Salem to reach our climate goals?
Yeah, and I can speak a little bit to that. So my role here is I am acting on behalf of the city as a consultant. So one of the things that I do is we go in and look at the, um, amounts that the haulers provide and make sure that they agree to support and things like that. So one of the things that we also look at is some of their educational pieces and pieces like that. So. A lot of the haulers are working towards, um. Making sure that the recyclable materials are actually recyclable because unfortunately, there's a lot of contamination in the recyclable material. So making sure that there's education to the individuals that are putting that in the cart. To make sure that we are, um, you know, actually the stuff that goes in there is actually recyclable because that makes it, if it's clean. Then you have more markets and it's easier to recycle those things. They also are working with, um, the various, uh, locations. To where they're disposing of these wa- the waste material to do it in a way that is for the environment. And they have initiatives in place to try to do that. Um. I haven't dug deep into all of the things that all of the individual haulers are doing because each hauler is a little bit different as to what their individual pieces are. So.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Anything further? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing then. And, uh, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Lewis. Okay, any discussion? Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have no objection to the rate for next year because it doesn't go up.
Right.
But I would like to have city staff get more information on what options are available to our local customers. To simultaneously satisfy our garbage haulers. We know they have profit margins to me and I understand that. But what, I don't feel that city staff have ever been asked to really explore what other options there are. So I suspect that when my colleagues is interested in making a motion along those lines, but my. My overall preference is that I would simply like to put off any rate setting for two thousand twenty-three. So that we can have city staff can consider other ways of doing it that do more to incentivize a pay-as-you throw model than we currently do. And do more to promote a goal of zero waste and do more to incentivize a reduction in households.
Yeah. Would, um. Yeah, that's a really interesting proposal. I'm trying to figure out if you'd like to, uh. Uh, make a proposal tonight, or would you like to work with Mr. Zink and others to put together a proposal to bring to council? In January that addresses this, uh, this request. I mean, if you're looking at that kind of, uh, work for the, uh, for the staff, that kind of thing. Just a minute, Tom. Um, I'll, I'll, I got you. Just trying to understand what, you know, what Vanessa might want to do.
Sure. No, I mean, um, I, I see our meetings are opportunities to brainstorm and collaborate. So I do not have a motion. I'm letting folks know how I feel. And if, my opinion is that the sooner we direct staff to start working on it. The sooner we can come back because two thousand twenty-three will be here before we know it.
Yeah.
I'm willing to defer to Tom and let him speak his piece. Uh, so that we can continue collaborating, talking out loud right now. And and I'd like to hear what my other peers think about this as well. So.
Yeah, I I want to understand where you are right now. Just, so you're just sort of like wanting to brainstorm this for a few minutes. Is that the idea?
I don't have motion at this moment.
Okay.
I'm here. I've shared my views. That's where I stand.
Tom?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Powers has, uh, his hand up. Maybe he could tell us something before.
Do you have something you want to say?
Yes, I sure.
Go ahead and say it. Go ahead and say it.
Uh, I move to amend the motion to only approve the two thousand twenty-two rates. And not provide for ninety-five gallon cans.
Second.
Second by Stapleton.
And, um, uh, so this dovetails a bit with what Counselor Nordike was saying. Um, there's all sorts of balls that are i- being juggled in the air right now. The issue with what really is pay-as-you throw, the, uh, climate action plan with zero emissions, the need for more consideration. There's been a lot of public testimony on various points. And I think Mr. Zink's report kind of highlights the issues and the complexity here. So we need, uh, uh, to, uh, uh. Proceed, I think, as Counselor Norlik was talking about in the future, but I'm pretty sure there might be some need to set twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two rates right now. So that's why I'm making my motion. So we can, we can get the next year. Uh, going and we can use that time to discuss all the issues that have been raised. In the written testimony and in the, uh, discussion of counselors.
Okay, okay. Mr. Powers, what what have you got in mind?
Uh, just, uh, some some background, a reminder to council, uh. May not have been highlighted in the staff report and that is. Uh, you know, we used to have an annual process. We went to a two-year process, uh, to. Uh, kind of avoid, uh, timing with water increases. So if if council were to pass this motion, the amended motion, it it would come back. You know, at approximately the same time as you would be considering, uh, water and sewer increases, uh, for, uh, two thousand twenty-three.
Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Powers, and that's kind of one of the other issues of complexity that we need to discuss. And I also just have to say that, uh, uh, the first time this came by, uh, as a counselor, when I was on council, I voted against it. Uh, I voted against increasing the rates and since that time, every time it's been up, I voted for it, for increasing the rate. So. Um, um, you know, I think that it's time really to look at things again, uh, um, and so that's why I made my motion.
Okay, well, this doesn't increase rates. Do I understand that correctly? Yeah, your motion would not increase rates.
No, my motion would go with the staff recommendation to twenty-twenty-two.
Increase it.
No increase on twenty-twenty-two. Yes, I agree.
Okay. So I want to make sure we understand that you're both, yours, okay. Uh, Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, I really wanted to, I guess, take a moment to, um, speak on behalf of my second. Um, and I've been emailing on the side, um, over the past couple of days about this and learning that. Um, the haulers have not been doing a lot of education for the last couple of years. And so they're restarting that effort now and I'm very excited to see what they're up to. Um. And my hope is that with restarting education, that we can really invest there as a county and. And as haulers, not as the city. Um, but if we can wait and let them do that work of education before we, um, okay, a larger can. I would really like to see if that work of education does what it's supposed to do, which is help people recycle properly. And do their yard debris properly, um, and so that they can reduce their garbage, um, in that way, instead of just automatically giving them a bigger can as soon as. Um, as soon as it gets uncomfortable for them, um, in the goal that we continue to go, uh, in the direction of zero waste in the future.
Okay. Anyone? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just comment on the ninety-five gallon. If it's true that there are families currently using two two cans. Then they're already, they're already using that many.
Right.
To eliminate, to help the paranoia about a larger can, I think is. It's just that paranoia. Um, as a practical matter, right now, people are throwing out, um, a certain amount of garbage every week. Whether it's in a, a larger can or not, I I just, I I feel that it is unfair. To those especially large families that quite frankly. Are in the education process but aren't there now and they need additional service. And so a ninety-five gallon can would do that. Um, I don't think we should be afraid of the size of the can.
Okay.
Can I reply, Mayor, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, sure. I I I understand that completely. I come from a big family of fourteen and so we had lots of garbage cans, um, and used them all. And I don't think that that that's my goal at all with this line of thinking. I think that it's, um, like Mr. Zink talked about, it is. They would be getting a a better deal, a price break on the ninety-five gallon can. Um, and I think what we're trying to say is that. It costs money to get rid of a lot of garbage. And if you have two cans, then, um, there is no price break for the amount of garbage that's going out to the curb. And so I guess, I guess that's where I'm at on that.
So. I guess I I I'm trying to understand. So it it penalizes large families who need a ninety-five gallon can. Is that the deal here?
Well, I don't think.
Doing ultimately is penalizing them. Is that the plan here?
I don't think that we have had families immediately grow to huge sizes in the last year. I think that folks are, you know, working from home and adding a couple of. Maybe an extra bag at the end of the week. Um, and so I don't, I don't think that I'm after penalizing big families. I'm saying that having come from one, I understand. Uh, the amount of garbage that is made, um, from a large family. Um.
But they're gonna pay more for two cans, right, than they would for the ninety-five gallon? So they're being penalized, whoever they are. It, I just, I thought we were talking large families here for a minute.
Well, I think what I'm trying to say is that it should cost more to get rid of more garbage. That's the world that I want to see. I want to see people incentivized. To reduce their garbage, um, at the, in the can and at the curb. That's my goal.
So we'll do it this year and see if we can. Okay. So it's an interesting way to do it. Okay. Tom, restate your motion. Let's have a, oops, I'm sorry, Trevor. I undo your, unmute, unmute.
Okay, thanks, guys. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and Tom for the motion. I plan to support it. Uh, I think that the the issue is that there are costs to all of us that live in this community, you know, and the broader atmosphere where we all live. Um, that are not being addressed and that we don't have a way to weigh those costs. And so what I think I'm looking for is is a flexibility to kind of more accurately. Charge, uh, so that we are taking those real changes to our world into account. I mean, we've just lived through one of the most unstable, you know, eighteen-month periods of my lifetime in terms of the wildfire, you know, the ice storm, the heat dome effect. All of those things. And I think we're all trying to do our part to make a difference on this very real, you know, disrupted climate that we all inhabit. So we're not trying to penalize anybody in particular, but we are trying to change behaviors over time. So I appreciate the motion and I plan to support it.
Okay, so the immediate effect, though, is to penalize. I I just want to make sure I understand that, that people who want a ninety-five gallon can. Can't have one because of. What? Tom?
Well, I agree with the statements of both, uh, counselors, uh, Phillips and Stapleton. I also will say that, you know, I sort of ingest, call them the behemoth or the monster can. And I will tell you that I am a big. Uh, relatively strong male and I have a driveway that is sloped down and. Those, the cans that are, that take the the recycle, uh, can and the glass, grass clippings can. They get away from me almost all the time when I'm trying to run them down. And I'm thinking about what is a ninety-five gallon, um, going to do? And, uh, I understand, you know, I I, you know, if you want to call it penalizing, I guess you could, but I tend to agree with Counselor Stapleton and Counselor Phillips in their. Um, iteration of this. And I also see, Mr. Mayor, it looks like, uh.
I've got other people to call on, so if you're done, I'll call.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna.
Okay, Counselor Gonzalez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, this is a tough subject. Because I I would like to see, you know, monthly service, like for, for example, my house, probably not, but at my office, we rarely fill that thing up. So. Looking for ways to decrease, um, the amount of miles these trucks are traveling, I'm all for that. But, you know, I currently have a big family, you know, and, um, we can't go out to eat. Um, you know, in person, we, that's very minimal. It's been, our kids have been home more and as hard as we try. You know, we, um, this is a lot more garbage. I mean, it just, so in a way, it is a penalty. So this, we can at least admit that, that it's gonna penalize some of these families. Um, even though they're trying, larger families will feel it. Um, larger family with young kids that don't feel safe going out to eat, you know, so. I I definitely for ways to, uh, you know. Sway behavior, but how do you do that when there's really no other option? Um, other than just to eat at home more. Whether that's home cooked meals or processed delivered food. It's just, it's more garbage that the restaurants aren't having because we're not building them as we used to. it's just, it's more garbage that the restaurants aren't having, because we're not building them as we used to. So, you know, as long as we can admit that that's a penalty, um, but we're going to be looking, probably can, and believe me, I've tried everything to, um, reduce some amount of garbage, and it has increased this year just because of COVID. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Powers?
Uh, thank you. You know, depending upon how the motion goes, uh, it, it certainly will, I think, require some additional staff, uh, analysis. We would likely come back to you with a cost of service analysis proposal, uh, to help, you know, quantify what right now is a lot of speculation. And, and a lot of speculation on very small data sets, uh, and, and to help better understand, uh, what Ryan was trying to say regarding the fixed costs versus the variable costs and what that looks like with the different, uh, can sizes. And then depending upon, uh, the outcome of the vote, I, I would ask you to call on the city attorney, please, uh, for what action, if any, is necessary on the original resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Leung?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've been listening to everybody and my colleagues, um, you know, share their concerns and, you know, I have to support Counselor Anderson's motion, and I hear from Counselor Stapleton and from Counselor Phillips, you know, they're, they're, um, like where they fall along the lines, and I have to agree, you know, also with, uh, with, um, with Counselor Gonzalez in terms of, you know, there might be, there, there might be some large families, like my family is pretty large. You know, I also have other relatives who are staying with me too, and so we will probably feel a little bit of that pinch at the same time. You know, I also appreciated hearing that there will be opportunities for engagement in terms of how we might be able, like, providing more education and, um, outreach in terms of, you know, here's foods, how, how, what are ways that we can actually, you know, save our garbage in a way that's actually, like, not filling our garbage can as fast? Um, especially like I'm also thinking about back when, in February, when we had the major ice storm and the amount of garbage that piled up, not just from my household, but also other countless households where, um, garbage, I think, was skipped for one week, and even the fires last year, where I think garbage in my neighborhood was skipped almost three weeks. And we ended up resorting to, uh, one of those weeks, going out to the, um, land, um, landfill just to toss out garbage that we had stuffed in our car. But, I mean, those are some things that we had to take in consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I will tell you, just from my perspective, I'm, I'm really concerned that you failed to use your equity lens you all have talked about so much. Uh, apparently that does not apply in this case. Uh, so I, I find it, uh, I find it interesting. I think there are ways to move through this, and that was why I was interested in Counselor Nordike's comments. I, I don't know if you're ready to, uh, go this far this quickly and penalize this population or, because you don't know even who they are, and rather perhaps follow, uh, the idea of stand back for a few weeks, talk to Mr. Zink, talk to the haulers, take another look at it and see what you want to bring as a more responsible, equitable motion. I, I, it's just my suggestion. So I'll be a no vote on this. I think it really does, uh, avoid issues of equity that I've heard so much about. Tom?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would disagree on the equity issues, and in fact, Mr. Zink told us, Mr. Zink told us that there is, there is relief available, just like the water situation. So that's, that's my, uh, response to we're not being equitable and penalizing. If in fact, we look at this through an equity lens, we've already provided with, uh, certain ways to get, reduce people's charges to begin with, and they have to show that they are in need of that. So I think we are considering equity.
Yeah, I, I don't. And I, I think it's too bad. I think this was an opportunity to really take some time, consider it, see how it all fits together and bring a reasonable motion to the floor, but I, I'm certainly ready to vote. Okay? Amy, on the amendment, if you'd call the motion.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
No.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? I'm sorry, could you repeat?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy, absent. Mayor Bennett?
No. Okay, amendment passes, so we're to the main motion now. Is this where you'd like to have the city attorney comment, Mr. Powers? Is that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, Dan, actually, some city attorney. Actually, I'd, I'd like to call on, uh, Ryan Zink. Um, it appears from what Ryan's telling me is that the, the rates for twenty-twenty-two are unchanged, so adoption of a resolution might not be necessary, but I'd like, uh, Ryan to confirm that.
Uh, good evening, yes. So the, uh, resolution, uh, that's attached as attachment number one, um, with the, uh, with the adoption of resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-one dash four, four-nine. Um, uh, trying to find the language here briefly, I apologize. It would also rescind the last resolution that adopted rates. So if, if, um, with the passage of the amendment, uh, not, uh, moving forward a ninety-five gallon cart um, and then also not, um, uh, putting in place the twenty-twenty-three rate request, there's no change to the rates, and so there's no motion that's required, or, or rather, um, uh, no approval of the current resolution that is needed to instill, uh, twenty-twenty-two rates. In other words, the current rates will just continue moving forward, uh, with no resolution.
So we essentially are telling us we should do nothing? I'm not sure.
Yes.
That we've just had this discussion for no purpose?
With, with the passage of the amendment, then yes, no action is required.
Okay.
So if I can add to that, so I think the, the, the amendment essentially says to continue the, the, the rates into twenty-twenty-two as proposed by staff, but just don't do the twenty-twenty-three rates or the ninety-five gallon service. So I would go ahead and vote on the motion, just so we have some clarity that the twenty-twenty-two rates will continue.
Okay. So the amended motion would essentially do that?
Yes.
And accomplish what you want. Okay. Everybody okay with that? Everyone understand that? Okay, if there are recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Okay, I guess I don't understand.
So if, let me explain, uh, more completely perhaps, um, or less completely, depending how you like it. Um, you're not adopting the resolution tonight. You're just taking an action to continue the rates into twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, are we voting on then? I think that's what Jim's asking. What are we voting on?
You're voting on whether to continue the current rates into twenty-twenty-two and not add ninety-five gallon service.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, my vote remains no.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor? I think I heard an aye from Counselor Gonzalez. Um, Counselor Hoy, absent. Counselor Nordike?
That's correct, yeah, an aye, yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Bennett?
No. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we will move on to the next public hearing. We're continuing our public hearing on the UDC. Amy, do you need to introduce this?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, Mayor. The city council will now continue the public hearing concerning ordinance bill number thirteen-twenty-one relating to proposed amendments to the Salem Revised Code, updating the Unified Development Code and other chapters of the SRC, and a proposed legislative zone change to change the zoning of those properties within the downtown general retail office overlay zone that are currently zoned multiple-family high-rise, high-residential commercial office and retail commercial to central business. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendments are SRC, chapter is one hundred-ten point zero-eight-five-B and two hundred-sixty-five point zero-one-zero-D. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. Bryce Bishop will provide opening remarks, followed by testimony from interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association for testimony, and individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, Amy, do we have any of these? Is Lynn Takata here representing Nen?
And, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Lynn Takata will not be joining us. She did, um, email a little bit more time ago, letting us know that.
Do we have any others that represent neighborhood associations then?
If we do, they didn't identify themselves.
Great, thank you. Okay, Bryce?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, I don't have a presentation for you this evening. I just want to let you know, staff, Lisa and I are here to answer any questions you have, and there are some additional items of testimony that were submitted, uh, in the interim period from the last hearing, uh, on the December sixth till this, uh, date of the continued hearing tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open, uh, a call on members of the public. Laura Buell?
Uh, yes, thank you. I am Laura Buell. I'm the Land Use Chair of the Northeast Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association. I did identify myself as representing a neighborhood association when I filled out the form this morning, so I should get five minutes. Thank you. Um,
Okay, we're marking, yeah, we got five, okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am testifying on behalf of Nen. We also submitted written testimony. In October, the Nen Board voted to support city staff's proposed amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapter eight-zero-eight, Preservation of Trees and Vegetation. We continue to support those amendments as originally proposed, including the protection of Douglas firs. Now, more than ever, having a tree canopy that covers as much of the city as possible is vital to the health and well-being of all life in Salem. With the increasing occurrence of extreme heat events like the one we experienced this summer, it is not an exaggeration to say that mature shade trees could save our lives. Trees make our city more beautiful and livable. They reduce traffic noise, absorbs stormwater, which saves the city money, provide wildlife habitat, improve people's mental health, and help combat climate change, which is a major goal of the city. Simply put, without a healthy, mature tree canopy, Salem will be a miserable place to live. That is why it is so important that we have strong rules in place to protect the resource we have. By providing more protection for Salem's urban forest, these amendments further the purpose of Salem's Unified Development Code to quote, "promote and protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public," unquote, and to quote, "preserve and enhance environmental resources, the natural scenic beauty of the area, and aesthetic qualities of the community," unquote. You may have heard from some that preserving trees and protecting tree root zo- zones during construction will prevent housing from being built in the city, thus causing urban sprawl. Pitting trees against housing is a red herring. Salem can have both housing and trees. The proposed amendments do not prevent housing units from being built. Indeed, if the amendments push developers to be more creative and build housing of a wider variety of types, sizes, and configurations in order to preserve trees instead of the uniform large, single-family dwellings on individual lots, then that's a good thing, since Salem, Salem's people need more types of housing, including small and attached units. The people who live in those units will be happier, healthier, and save money on cooling if they have mature trees around them. Nen also urges the council to follow staff's original proposal and include Douglas firs on the list of protected species. The purpose of the ordinance is to preserve mature trees, and Salem is home to many healthy and spectacular specimens of Douglas fir that need protection. In our own neighborhood of Nen, we have lost the chainsaws, many healthy Douglas firs that are well over a hundred years old and were cut down with no input or evaluation from the city, even though their removal degrades the environment and the neighborhood for everyone. If a tree is determined to be high-risk, it can still be removed. But every time a healthy, mature Douglas fir is cut down with no assessment or permit, it has a profound and negative impact on our neighborhood and the entire city. In sum, Nen urges each of you individually and as a council to do everything you can to help preserve the tree canopy that Salem has and also work to improve it. These proposed tree code amendments are an important first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions for Laura? Uh, Jim?
Yes, I, uh, just want to make sure I understand you. La- uh, last week, there were several people from the development community that raised a concern that if we make development hard enough in Salem, that, uh, builders and people will go somewhere else. And I think that's what you're referring to as a, a red herring, so you don't believe there's any, any legitimacy in that comment, that if you make development hard enough, uh, people will, will not develop here, and they'll develop somewhere else.
There is tremendous demand for housing. People will not develop somewhere else. There, there are lots of cities that have much, much stronger tree codes than we do and have lots of housing, including lots of, um, apartments. Uh, Wilsonville is a very good example of this. They have a very strong tree code, and they have developed, uh, lots of housing. So, yes, I, I believe that's a red herring. Um, the developers, uh, want to have fewer regulations so that they can do what they do more easily. Uh, but it is important for the city to protect the health and well-being of everybody in the city, and that means having a healthy tree canopy.
Counselor Leung?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had a question, not necessarily before, um, the, the, sorry, my kids are slamming on the door right now. I had a more, probably more of a question for staff, so I, I could wait for mine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Laura. Um, Lelania Kruger? Lelania Kruger?
She, she doesn't appear to be in the meeting, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Marissa Thieb?
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
I am not associated with the neighborhood association. Uh, so I just wanted to start by acknowledging that, um, if there's anything that last year has taught us that, uh, nuance is pretty key. So I wanted to, um, share my, my nuance with you. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm excited about HB two thousand and one, um, a climate action plan and our, our Salem, um, integrating those. Um, some of these ideas have been met with NIMBYism and misunderstanding. Um, for example, neighborhood hubs, uh, don't put them near me. Also, uh, people are worried about taking away their natural gas, uh, which is not what, um, is proposed right now. I wanted to mention a couple of things about, um, general heavy-handednesses in my written testimony to match this. Um, some more transparency in our code, um, calling for that. Um, and then just a quick, um, hat tip to, uh, removing parking minimums. I think that is really important in all of the goals of these, um, plans, um, by increasing our density and making our city more walkable, increasing affordability, decreasing stormwater runoff, lowering greenhouse gases, freeing up more land for housing and businesses, um, which also increases tax revenues. So lots and lots of benefits from, uh, eliminating parking minimums. I suggest that they, uh, this happens citywide, not just within, um, a quarter mile of transit. Uh, to the tree protections. So this is where the nuance really comes in. Um, I appreciate the vigorous discussion from last week. Um, I kind of almost wish we got into the nuance of tree preservation like we do ninety-five gallon garbage bins. Uh, my, my perception of, of what are absolutely good intentions, which is saving trees, um, has happened with a little too narrow a focus. Um, I think we can have a growing canopy, as one of the developers last week mentioned, um, well-managed. I think we can have a growing canopy, as one of the developers last week mentioned, while maintaining our same standards. And then, if you're talking about carbon, a decrease in commute by one car by five miles is, would save seven gallons of gas, which results in 140 pounds of added carbon each day. One tree sequesters about a very healthy tree, which I would argue our city trees are not that healthy, sequesters the same amount per year. So that's hundreds of times different, not equivalent. I would encourage people to approach this idea, these ideas of scientific curiosity rather than tribalism and greenwashing and NIMBYism and...
Thanks, thanks, Marissa.
I have the decision with those. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you a question, because it is kind of nuanced. I think you make a very good point. On the tree, you kind of linked tree canopy with commuting. And I wanted to kind of understand where you were going with that. I didn't quite get it.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, I think you're right. I think it is nuanced, and I want to give you a chance to kind of make it more transparent.
Yeah, so if we're comparing housing that may not be able to be built because of these restrictions, as one of the developers said last week, they looked at one of their unit, their 13-unit properties, and they would only be able to do four units there with these restrictions. So if that's however many vehicle commutes are lengthened by having to move outside of the urban growth boundary, that's going to be way more carbon than a, within a single tree or even several trees, hundreds of trees could sequester in a year. And so I, in my written testimony, I give some examples of alternatives that would accomplish these goals.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Thank you. It's helpful. Some of these... Yeah, getting the, getting the the various factors in what the equation actually looks like can be really...
Yeah, so if you take your actual goal into, is your goal to sequester carbon or to have trees to look at? You know, so there's different outcomes and options for each of these goals. So it's really important to be explicit in your goals.
Well, that's probably what we'll try to figure out, is it looking at them or saving them? It's an interesting question. Yes, Councilor Stapleton?
I wanted, thank you so much, Mayor. I wanted to thank Marissa for coming tonight and presenting for us your public comment. Marissa is a lovely individual who lives in my ward, just a couple of blocks away, and she and her husband are great assets to our community. So thank you so much for being so specifically engaged to not only email me and the council at a later date, and then now come here and testify when I believe that you're traveling right now. So thank you for your commitment to our community.
It's 11:30 where I am.
Yeah, you're East Coast, right?
Ah, all right.
So I wanted to say thank you for bringing the nuance to this conversation. You are challenging and pushing me, and I want you to know that I receive that. I'm always curious to learn. And so I look forward to the time that you get back in town, and we can take that walk that you promised me, and so that we can talk more about this topic. Because this is really near and dear to my heart, and I will say that you and I mostly land on the same side of things, but this one is just, I'm having a hard time understanding where you're coming from, and I think because I have so much heart involved at the first part. So know that I am here for this conversation. I want to have this conversation with you and with others. And I will do my very best to take in the science and the data and make a really good, informed decision for our community. I think for me, what I would love more than anything else is to have developers come back downtown and start redeveloping the land that we have that is already developed to not take down trees and reduce the miles traveled altogether. And we still have these beautiful trees to look at to fight climate change as far as emissions, and also the heat island effect, and storm runoff, and all of the things that trees do for us. So I look forward to you coming home and you and I getting together to talk about this. Thanks so much again tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. That really was very good. Thank you.
Yep, infill's super important, and I look forward to our walk, too.
Yeah, yeah. And that could be one of the great lost items is infill. It's really an interesting problem. Michael Slater?
All right. Got the new camera. Okay. Am I up?
Yep.
Oh, you're great. Thank you. So my name is Michael Slater. I'm a resident of Ward 7. I also serve on the planning commission, although I'm just here in my own capacity today. I wanted to talk about the critical tree root zone. It's actually something I brought to this council four years ago, believe it or not. So I'm very excited that we might have a chance to actually move forward on protecting a tree's critical root zone. The staff has recommended that we create a critical root zone, or we protect a critical root zone that is one foot per each, each inch of tree radius. That is not an arbitrary standard. The city did not come up with that themselves. That actually is coming from the International Society of Arboriculture. That is kind of the standard approach, best practice for tree preservation in the United States. It's been institutionalized in national standards. It's actually derived from the American National Standard Institute, which says that a tree protection zone should be somewhere between six and 18 times the diameter of a tree trunk. And what that averages out to be is one inch of radius for the tree trunk. So Portland has the standard, and as we talked about earlier, Portland has not shut down development. They're still developing single-family homes and residences in Portland. Eugene and Corvallis have actually gone a little further. They have 1.5 inches of radius, of 1.5, one foot for each 1.5 of radius. So that's actually stronger than what we're looking at here in Salem. The critical issue here on the root zone is that once you start working in that root zone, the probability that the tree is going to die over time is significantly higher. And so when you start working in that zone, and then you pass it off to the homeowner as something that is a benefit to them, when in fact, it actually may become a liability to them, is a significant problem. And we should, simply should not treat them as if they are being preserved. If we decide that we need to work within a critical root zone, we should simply take the tree out. And so what I would say is that if we want to provide some flexibility, we should do this on the total number of trees that we're preserving, or the percentage of trees we're preserving, but that once we get to the critical root zone, that we don't make any concessions. So that would be my kind of fundamental recommendation here, is that if we're looking for some flexibility for the home builders, and they are being asked to do a lot in the current environment, we should not do it by giving in on the critical root zone. Now, as I just mentioned, the national standard is somewhere between six and 18 times the diameter of the tree. So the home builders have suggested that for non-significant trees, they have the ability to work within, you know, that one inch. And I think if they have an arborist report...
Thank you, Michael. The time's up. I'm sorry. Does anyone have any questions for Michael? Yeah, Trevor, what?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mike Slater, for coming in tonight. Could you just finish up that last point? What were you about to tell us on that last point?
Yeah, the home builders have proposed working, having the ability to work within the critical root zone of a non-significant tree, if they have an arborist report. And it seems to me that is a reasonable compromise, assuming they don't go within, you know, six times the diameter of the tree. Right now, it's kind of averaged out to be 12 times the diameter. So it does seem like there is a little bit of wiggle room that we can offer here that still complies with the American National Standards Institute for Tree Preservation.
Mike, if you don't mind, Mayor, can I ask him a follow-up question?
Sure.
The way I understand the staff's current proposal is with an arborist report, you could go down to 70%. How does that, you know, 100%, 70% compare to the numbers that you're talking about? I'm just, I'm not quite on the same math page.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, maybe I would ask you, Trevor, to do the math on that. You know, if it's averaged out to 12, I guess, and 70%, I think it's probably in a similar ballpark here. Okay.
Any, anything else, Trevor, on that one? Okay?
This is my question. Thank you.
Okay, great. Tom?
Yeah, I don't really have a question. Thanks for coming, Mr. Slater, but I'd love to hear at some point, I know we're not going to make a decision tonight, so I'd love to hear if staff could follow up a bit on your testimony, Michael, because I think that's pretty interesting, and I also think it's pretty... I appreciate the fact that you go along with some of the home builders' recommendations. So we're trying to find a workable and appropriate compromise here. So I appreciate that, and I'm putting, I don't know who, Lisa, or you, or who's ever, Norm, who's ever on the staff, I'd love to hear their kind of responses to what you said tonight.
Well, hopefully, we'll have a motion that you agree to that gives you that opportunity, and perhaps even talk some more with them about it. Any other comments for Michael or questions for Michael? Okay, thank you very much. Mike Erdman?
All right, there we go. So Mike Erdman, Home Builders Association, Maryland-Pope County, 2075 Madrona Avenue, Southeast. And of course, as we talked about, you recall, we were here last week, myself, Natalie, Janie, Eric Olson, talking about the problems we've got with those critical root zone protection measures in the non-significant trees and the challenges that creates in terms of density and creating the housing units that we need. And of course, you tasked us with coming back to you tonight with some recommendations, perhaps on some of the modifications we might suggest. And so I think we've tried to do that. Keep in mind, of course, we've only had a few days to do that, you know, and to try and craft solutions to a really challenging problem. I had a great opportunity to meet with Councilors Hoy and Phillips over the weekend to try and, I think, share a little bit more about what we're thinking, and then try to get maybe a little better idea of where the council is. And as you heard last week, it's really, it's that critical root zone protection around those non-significant trees that makes it really difficult to develop. And so Natalie Janie's going to talk to you here in a moment and give you an example where you can see, you know, under the current ordinance, what that does, and on a very representative site, and how it takes out, in this case, I think about 40% of the lots. And so, you know, those type of situations really either kills a project or forces the lot prices up so much that the project really doesn't work. And so either way, we kind of lose that ability to maximize the density of a project, and that, you know, puts more pressure on the UGB. It pushes development outside of Salem, which is what is happening right now, and all that runs counter to those efforts to reduce GHD emissions. So we've really tried to come up with a more viable solution, I think, that better enables development of the site while really providing effective tree protection measures. So Eric Olson's going to cover what we're suggesting here, kind of going beyond that one-size-fits-all approach, as Michael Slater mentioned, some additional flexibility there, working with an arborist report. But also, really importantly, looking at better, clear, and objective standards that would be used to determine when a significant tree can be removed. Because if we're going to expand the definition of significant trees, you're going to see a lot more requests naturally for folks that do need to remove those trees when they get in the way of the necessary road infrastructure and the like. And so we're concerned there, because the only way that you get permission to remove those significant trees is when there's quote-unquote "no reasonable design alternative." That's not a clear and objective standard. It's a lot of subjectivity, which adds a lot of risk to a project. And so we think that by defining when you can remove a tree, rather than a subjective standard, I think that's a better outcome for the city and for the development community. We know that this is complex, you know, trying to find solutions that work here. And so we're hoping, frankly, that you'll send us away with staff and other interested parties to see if we can craft really a better solution than what we've got. Because definitely, if we want to see the density that's envisioned in the con plan revisions, there's going to have to be more flexibility than the requirements that you got in front of you. So thank you, and happy to answer questions, but I might suggest you wait until Natalie and Eric get a chance to describe in detail what I've laid out here.
Okay. Any question? Okay. Natalie Janie, please.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Natalie Janie. I'm an engineer with Multitech Engineering. Our office is at 115513th Street South in Salem. After the last hearing, I decided it was important to give a real-world example of how the UDC changes regarding trees could affect a development. I don't want to seem immovable on the issue. Like I said, I understand the motivations, but I'm nervous, and this example, I think, will illustrate why. So this is a development that currently exists in South Salem. It was just recently approved and developed. Not all of the lots that are shown have homes on it yet. There are a couple. I picked this one because it's not heavily treed. It doesn't have excessive slopes. It's not overly large project, but it's not a small project either. It was required to have the connection down to the bottom of the screen that you see to an existing street, and it was required to have a connection to the property to the north for future development. This plan that I show, that I show here, is fairly consistent with what would be required under the new code for a tree conservation plan. So you can see the significant trees in red with the critical root zones surrounding it, and then the non-significant trees are shown in green. The circles that are shaded are the trees that would likely be slated for preservation. So this plan would require an adjustment out from the get-go for the removal of significant trees in the roadways, which is, which is a current practice. It's just currently, there's not nearly as many trees that are deemed significant. But it would also require an adjustment, because it would not be able to achieve the 30% preservation and allow for the lots to develop. As it stands, possibly four, maybe five, maybe six lots have significant challenges for building a home. So last time, a question was asked regarding what a development would need to do, if it needed to remove a significant tree, and staff's response was that it would apply for an adjustment, and that's where my concern lies. The current criteria, as Mike mentioned, for an adjustment is that there be no reasonable alternative that can be achieved. And this is very subjective, and it's a really big challenge to prove. It would provide a great deal of assurance if there were some clear and objective criteria for adjustments, and this would include things I think Eric's going to talk about, but being able to remove for critical root zones that extend into the right-of-way, the PUE, a driveway approach, where you would cite a house, and also with regards to grading. So with that, I wanted to say this is not a red herring. This is a very real concern that the development community has. And I feel like it's kind of a mistake to quote Portland as the goal, because we don't work on polling prices.
Yeah, I, thank you. Any questions? Tom?
Thank you for coming down, and thank you for your testimony. If you could put back up on the screen the last slide you showed, I don't know if you can or not. Yeah, thanks. So looking at that, when you said there are five or six lots that might be developed, might be affected by this, I think it's pretty obvious what they are. The ones with the shaded red areas are potentially a problem for development. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. And to go even further, I'm not even sure if the ones that aren't slated, like on Lot 7, there's a big open circle that would be removed. But I don't know if that would be successful, because that's a pine tree, and currently, previously, pine trees weren't significant. So I don't even know if that would be a successful one to get removed. So it could be more.
A pine or a Doug fir, I would think. But yeah, that's if Doug fir is included. And then, this is just the same general comment that directed towards staff that I directed with Mr. Slater's testimony, and I know staff will be responding and discussing both what Mr. Erdman says and what you say and what Mr. Olson say. And so I appreciate the testimony on all sides of this issue, because it is very complex, and thanks for coming.
Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question for you. How many of those lots that you just showed us are slotted to be middle housing, or are they all single-family?
Well, since this was developed without a middle housing standard, this would all be single-family. This is under old codes, so middle housing standards don't exist. So the plan is for this to all be detached, single-family housing.
Okay, and would, I'm assuming you've had a chance to look at those middle housing and probably paid pretty close attention to it as it's gone through the state legislature. With those new guidelines and goals that that, and I guess really creative solutions to some of our really big problems with affordable housing and housing availability, do any of those change the game here? Is that, is that going to be something that's useful for you in a situation like this, that you could change maybe what you're building so that it, so that we can get more housing in, but also, you know, protect this tree canopy?
I definitely think middle housing has a place, and that it will be a tool that we can use, especially as minimum densities come into play. But there are certain challenges that come along with that, too. So if you were going to try and do middle housing on this site, and you wanted to have it so that it could be owner-occupied and not rent, you know, not have rent on one side, so they had, so they each had their own lot. That provides another adjustment that's needed, because now these lots would not meet the width-to-deep ratio. Likely, that would be one that would be... Likely that would be one that would be allowed, but it's just, it's just another layer. So I definitely see middle housing being a tool that we can use to preserve trees and to meet the thirty percent. But I don't think that is the solution all the time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Eric Olson, please.
Hi, my name's Eric Olson. I reside at fifteen twenty Gwynne Street in Monroe. First, let me tell counsel how appreciative we are that you're being very deliberate on how best to move forward on amending chapter eight oh eight of the U D C. As I mentioned in my testimony last week, I am an outlier a bit in our industry. I believe climate change is real and we must be proactive. I believe density should be encouraged because denser, denser cities and saving farmland is more sustainable. I believe affordability is a huge hurdle we must tackle as a community. It is socially responsible thing to do. Unfortunately, I fear the tree ordinance as written will likely work against all of those. That is what I mentioned last week. Because the mayor asked us to bring forward possible remedies to the chapter eight oh eight amendments, a team of us looked at what is being proposed, all with the firm backdrop that we understand the gravity of climate change and that we should encourage density and affordability. We apologize that we're not able to offer a greater period of time for you to review our comments, but one week was a press for us to get you anything substantial at all. To quickly summarize our recommendations, which I sent out around earlier this afternoon, three proposals. To quickly summarize our recommendations, they are, recommendation one, permit an arborist to be hired in lieu of utilizing the prescriptive critical root zone protection for non-significant trees, which would be a detailed method for protecting the health of trees. This, I think, allows our industry to make additional investments in projects by bringing in experts in order to both preserve trees and maximize the number of lots which can be created. Note that the Oregon State Extension Service has a path for this, which I have referenced in my written material. We further understand that this will likely require greater monitoring and so there might be a necessary inspection, inspection fee as part of this. Recommendation two, specify clear and objective standards for the removal of significant trees which are within the development improvement areas. That is in streets, P U Es, driveway approaches and that kind of thing. Without clear and objective standards, the challenge for design professionals to move forward on projects are often insurmountable and consequently make projects not viable. And recommendation three, which is maybe a little bit out there, but we think solves a lot of the concerns related to climate change, permit additional removal of significant trees when designing subdivisions with a solar panel offset. While we might seem rather outside the box, we firmly believe that this type of offset will permit our city to increase housing density and affordability while simultaneously offsetting the carbon cost of removing significant trees. And I made a reference to that in my comments, in the comments that we submitted earlier, where you're sort of comparing the net carbon cost of cutting down a forty inch diameter tree with solar panels.
Thank, thank you very much, Eric. Thank you very much to you all for your, your work on this. I think you've given us quite a bit of, of information to think about and work with, which is I think what we were kind of looking for. I really appreciate it. Tom, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate it very much, Mr. Olson. And this is, it's an extremely complex matter. And so the more information we have as a council from every sphere, sphere of interest is better. I do have one question with respect to your number one, and I've read your written material. You're talking about using an arborist in lieu of significant trees. Are you including a proposal that Doug firs would become significant trees or are you just looking at the white oaks? So could you, I don't know, live with or work with Douglas fir being a significant tree when you still have the arborists that we're talking about?
I, I think that's a probably a fairly minor point.
Okay.
As far as the Doug fir, we're not, we haven't really weighed in on it and maybe don't know exactly what the impact of that might be.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I thought it was going to be a minor point. I just wanted to, to see if you guys had any complete position on that. So thanks a lot.
Okay, anyone else? Any other comments, questions? Okay, oh, sorry, Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett and Eric Olson. Thank you, Mr. Olson, for being here. Can you restate the, of the three goals, I think it's the first one. Is that the one where you guys talk about the arborist report to allow for development within the critical root zone?
Yes.
Okay, and, and is, is your recommendation that you get an arborist report for every single tree? Or which trees get the arborist report and allow for development within the critical root zone?
Well, we certainly would be willing to do, I think, have an arborist report on all the trees or ones that are particularly susceptible, that might be particularly problematic for the subdivision. We really haven't worked through the details as far as we would be willing to do it either way.
Okay. So, I mean, yeah, I, I hear that and I appreciate, you know, you guys taking the time to meet with me this past weekend to, to get your perspective. As I mentioned then, I still have some concerns that, you know, I would like a minimum within that, but I understand, you know, your guys' perspective. So thank you for your time.
If I, if I could just, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
No, if you've got, I please, if you have another follow-up question, I would love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, well, I just, if I could just, if you just indulge me for just a second to read from the Oregon Extension Service. It says, "Some tree species are more tolerant of damage and disturbance in the C R Z than others. A tree's tolerance depends not only upon the species, but also upon conditions present prior to and at the time of damage. Tree health, age of tree, soil erosion, moisture, time of year the damage occurs, its severity and the weather conditions prior to, during and after the damage all contribute to a tree's response. An experienced I S A certified arborist can analyze these variables and make specific recommendations to retain or recover a tree's health and safely, and safety during and after the construction process." So our, our belief is that one size doesn't fit all and that we can really make it a win-win situation by being able to bring professionals in to look at specific trees and what would be best for each one that might be problematic for the development.
Okay. Further questions? Virginia, do you have questions for Mr. Olson?
I do. Thank you so much. So from what I understand with the code right now, you can get a variance to go into the root zone for certain trees. Are you saying that with that you would also like to give maybe some kind of insurance that has a arborist coming out and saying that yes, this tree would be okay with that kind of interference with the critical root zone?
Well, right now, I believe that the way the amendment is written, that you do need an arborist no matter what, if you're going to go within the, within the critical root zone. I think that's currently how it's written. We think seventy percent might be a, an arbitrary number. And we want to be able to sort of analyze everything on a tree-by-tree basis to make sure that we're using the best of science to determine how, how to move forward in terms of protecting the trees and also allowing for the greatest density possible.
Can I follow up with one more?
Yeah.
Um, would the home builders be interested in hiring the city forester for this work to ensure that we have city representation here and not, I guess, I get worried that there would, I want some transparency and I want some, somebody there who is supporting and dedicated to the goals that the city and the community have and not just for the development. And so that's something that, when you talk about this, that's something that goes off in my mind. You don't have to answer me right now. But that is something that I am thinking about when this conversation is, is being had.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay, I move to close the public hearing and keep the record open to January tenth at five P M with counsel to conduct deliberations and act on the ordinance at its January twenty-fourth meeting. Say you, Jackie. That's what I thought. I was trying to, I thought it was. Okay, Counselor Leon. Seconded it. Anyone, any discussion? I think we all understand how much is involved here, so the time will be helpful. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, since, excuse me, since we are going to hold this off, I'd really like to have the issue of what we've heard tonight as the red herring addressed. There, there is evidence, I would hope, that could be presented that show that in communities where development has become difficult, the developers go somewhere else and the people buy somewhere else. And I know this to be a fact. But it would be nice to be able to have staff come back, maybe with consultation with the home building industry to see if that is in fact true or not, because I know it is, but I'm just one person.
Okay. Well, that'd be one that I hope they can take a look at. So much of this is subjective, Jim. Trevor, what, what you got?
I mean, I actually do support Counselor Lewis's, you know, the concept that he's talking about in, in the sense that the converse could also be true. I mean, there may be advantages to having trees, you know, that help with, with infill that we're not realizing, that they're more attractive, that make, you know, communities more desirable, that'll support, you know, more density. So I would like to get, you know, some objective data to look at that, that balancing, because I do think that we will have to strike a balance in this.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Amy, would you call the role?
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy is absent. Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, done with that one, we will move on then to special orders of business. Five B, our operational assessment of the police department's response to calls involving suicide. Mr. Powers, who's our? Chief Womack, is that who will be doing it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor and counselors, good evening. Trevor Womack, Chief of Police. What we have before you tonight is a presentation involving an independent assessment of five years worth of police response to and calls involving a threat of suicide, individuals in behavioral health crisis, suicide calls. This is a result of a settlement agreement spawning from an officer involved shooting back in two thousand twelve. In two thousand twelve, our officers responded to a residence, a call at a residence involving a man named Chase Hammer, who was reported to be experiencing mental health crisis and threatening suicide and in possession of a handgun. Confrontation followed and Mr. Hammer was fatally shot tragically and unfortunately. The city, this triggered litigation with the city and the Hammer family and a settlement agreement was reached. Many components, many non-monetary components of that settlement agreement have been worked on over the years and addressed and completed. And what we're doing tonight is the last piece of that settlement agreement, which would be a public presentation of an independent assessment of our response to suicide calls. So an outside independent consulting firm, Crisis Systems Management, has taken a detailed look at five years worth of our response to suicidal calls. And they'll be presenting that information tonight again as the final component of that settlement agreement. So with that, I'd like to turn it over now to Karen Houston from C S M to do that presentation.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to go ahead and share screen. I'm going to apologize for my voice. I've been fighting bronchitis and laryngitis for the last three days, so I'm sounding a little bit scratchy this evening. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So this will be just a quick, high-level overview of the report which is attached in the agenda this evening. It is a, a look at five years worth of responses to suicide calls by the Salem Police Department from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. On the, this particular assessment, the operational assessment that was conducted by C S M only addresses section three of the Hammer Agreement and that's listed there below in the slide. Basically was to review and assess police response calls over the past five years. The five-year timeframe again was from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. The can, the assessment was started in two thousand twenty and finished earlier this year. Crisis Systems Man, Management compiled the information, the assessment team. There were four members of Crisis Systems Management who C S M itself, as a company, has been around for almost two decades and has conducted many different types of assessments, operational assessments, critical evaluations, statistical analyses for law enforcement agencies throughout the United States during that time. One of the first things that was noticed by the assessors within doing this, this particular look at all of the different calls was the fact that the Salem Police Department was completely transparent. I will say that's not something that we typically always see when we're conducting an assessment of this type with different agencies. But the Salem Police Department went above and beyond to try and make sure that we had all of the information that we needed. Any requests that we made for data, for camera footage, for recordings, interviewing officers, any of those types of things were immediately responded to. And we had no issue whatsoever getting information from the Salem Police Department. We also found throughout the assessment process that Salem was committed to implementing previous previous parts of the settlement agreement from the Hammer settlement agreement. And that became evident as we began to look at responses over that five-year period, that previous recommendations in the Hammer settlement were already being implemented and that they were also very responsive towards implementing any recommendations that we made as well. The assessment focused on basically everything with the responses that we reviewed. Everything from the initial information that was received by the Salem Police Department, whether that be through a nine-one-one call, whether that be through someone flagging down an officer when they were out on patrol, or would that actually be an officer observing something and responding to it? Looking then at the information that was dispatched out, the patrol officers who responded, looking to see whether any type of de-escalation or intervention processes that were employed in that particular response. Looking at what type of supervision was overseeing that type of a call, whether on-site directly or via radio and monitoring that type of thing. Looking at alternative resources. What other options did the officers who were responding to that particular person in a suicidal crisis employ? Did they look for other community resources, family resources, doctors, mental health care professionals, those types of things there? And then finally looking at the outcome of each of those incidents. Each incident was scored with a matrix and then each of the assessors in reviewing every particular response also had the option of putting red flags or green flags. Red flags would be those things that we looked at from a response perspective and said this gave us a cause for concern. For instance, if we saw that an officer had responded without cover or an officer had responded without full information being dispatched to him, critical information that he might need, that might be a red flag. On the other side of it though, they could also be flagged with green flags. And those are things where we saw officers who were basically going above and beyond what would be expected and trying to ensure that the situation was handled in the most professional manner possible and making sure the person received all the care and that they needed in that particular response. In that case, if a, if a incident was flagged by any of the assessors, it then was turned over to all members of the assessment team to look at and review further and determine if it became a finding of some sort or if it was something that was kind of an anomaly and not seen across the board. Originally, we received over three thousand cases from the Salem Police Department, in particular from the first three years from two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. The report system in place at that time in Salem did not allow them to automatically select based on keywords. And so an officer who was on light duty, I actually had to sit there and read every single report. And so they gave us above and beyond and didn't hold anything back. And they left it to the assessment team to call out those reports which actually were responsive to these terms of the settlement agreement. So for instance, they might have sent us a report where the initial call was a family member saying that the person was suicidal. But upon digging into the report, we determined the person actually was not suicidal. The person was just depressed or upset and requesting a ride to the psychiatric crisis center. Since that report didn't fit the criteria as outlined in the agreement, then it was called out of. Since that report didn't fit the criteria as outlined in the agreement, then it was called out of those, um, incidents that were looked at by the assessment team. Once we had went through all three thousand of them, we determined that were actually thirteen hundred and eighty-four that met the criteria as outlined in the terms of the settlement agreement. And we selected a hundred and thirty-two cases from each year, resulting in a total of six hundred and sixty cases, or almost forty-eight percent of all of the responses within that five-year timeframe that were reviewed and assessed individually. Um, I will say overall, every single one of the assessors we met, um, on a routine basis, either via Zoom or via conference calls, uh, were located in all different areas of the country. Um, but we all were impressed with the fact we did not see any recurring or what we would consider systemic issues. Um, those things that we saw and the findings that we will present to you represented primarily some issues with some training and things that were already in place and ongoing, and then also some staffing levels that came into question. Um, our first finding, our first of four findings, has to do with report writing. And most people would probably look at that and say, well, what the heck does report writing have to do with responding to a suicidal individual? But we know statistically that individuals who are experiencing suicidal ideation or in suicidal crisis mode, that many times we will be responding to those individuals multiple times. And so having a report which is well documented about what has happened, what actions were taken, what was helpful, what was not helpful, whether that be individuals there in the community, other community resources, perhaps family members who were helpful or family members and neighbors and friends who actually escalated the situation. Having that documented in a report for future responses helps us to make better decisions as we're responding again to the same individual who may be in crisis. Um, it also allows us to document those, um, decisions and actions by the responder. Why did they do certain things based on behaviors that they saw and if they documented? And what we found was that the very objective things that came up in every response were well documented. But the more subjective things such as how a person was behaving, instead of saying the person was throwing a fit, you know, that brings up different issues between myself and in probably every single person on, who's listening to this um, presentation about what does throwing a fit mean? And so being more specific in that report writing about the person threw themselves on the ground and began to, um, you know, bang their fists onto the floor, bang their head into the walls, those very, um, observable behaviors that should be documented in those reports. So the report recommendation, the recommendation for that finding was basically just enhance some of the training um, and enhance the policy to reflect the requirements of crisis response, uh, report writing. Crisis response report writing is not like any other police report writing. It is focusing a lot on the behaviors of that individual who is in crisis and how we are responding to those, and more importantly, how we are responding to them for future responses and having that information documented. The second finding had to do with a communication center. Um, it became apparent that, um, on some calls, there were some critical details that just did not seem to be captured by the call takers and subsequently relayed out to responding officers by the dispatchers. It also became apparent that the application of de-escalation and suicide intervention techniques um, was not consistent across all of the different responses. And one of the things that came apparent very quickly to us was that there was, um, a short, a, a, basically a staff shortage within the communication center. That's not a surprising finding for our organization. We are seeing that across the board, um, nationwide at communication centers and nine-one-one centers, that there's a, an extreme critical staffing shortage at those types of places. But that has an impact on responses. Um, detailed in the report, you will see that we didn't do a full statistical analysis, just a quick kind of, um, look at how many calls were being taken by the Willamette Valley Communication Center, um, which handles twenty-nine different agencies for police, fire, and medical response. Of that, at the particular time we were looking at, only one dispatcher was assigned for Salem. My understanding is that has since been increased somewhat. There were several call takers, but on average, they were dealing with a new call every seventy-five to eighty seconds. There is so much information that is lost when you're trying to get information from a caller who's calling nine-one-one, who may be in crisis, it may be the actual person who's suicidal who's calling. And because of the slow, uh, thought process with these individuals when they are in crisis mode, in seventy-five to eighty seconds, you can't begin to get the critical information that you need to dispatch officers out and provide them with risk and safety information. And also, by allowing, having a, a more robust staffing would allow those same communications personnel to stay on the line with what we call verbal containment. And helping, especially if that person is suicidal, helping give them someone, feel like they have that connection, continue to talk with them, and apply suicide intervention techniques or crisis intervention techniques with that individual. So our recommendations for this finding was that, first of all, review the staffing levels. Um, provide crisis negotiation, suicide intervention, and de-escalation training to communications personnel from the call takers all the way through the dispatchers. And then consider integrated training, um, scenarios between the communications personnel and those responding officers in the field. So that instead of a nine-one-one caller, um, basically talking to a dispatcher, maybe starting to have some good rapport with that person and then hanging up, and the officer in the field having to then start from scratch with this person, it's a transition of that phone call to the officer in the field. And there's some very, uh, specific techniques that are used in that across the United States. Our third finding dealt with the Behavioral Health Unit, basically indicating that it was the best possible effort um, towards a successful outcome, the reduction of the frequency of contact between the person in crisis and law enforcement. Um, the V H U as, um, in place at the Salem Police Department consistently was, um, of all the reports that we read, it was very evident that these individuals were very confident in what they were doing. They were very competent in what they were doing and did a fantastic job of hooking people up with community resources and then following up with them to ensure that they had those community resources, that they were following up with their treatment programs, that they were following up with, um, whatever plan of care may have been outlined for them, which subsequently reduced the overall number of contacts that the Salem Police Department had with these individuals. Um, what also came out of that was that the community in particular, I think, has grown to expect such an incredible response from that Behavioral Health Unit that a lot of the group homes were becoming almost too dependent on it. And we saw a lot of calls going to group homes for things that normally would be outside of the purview of a police response. But patrol was being called there to, um, basically referee fights between individuals in there in which there were no, uh, a lot of times they might be a verbal fight, there were no weapons, there was no escalation or anything else, but the police were being called to these group homes. And so it was kind of an over-reliance and over-dependence on the Behavioral Health Unit and the Salem Police Department. Um, V H U at, uh, its current staffing levels is not able to take care of every single call that comes in for a person who's in crisis or a person who might be experiencing suicidal, um, ideation. And when they're not available because they're already engaged in another call somewhere else within the county, then that places the burden back on the patrol officers who do not have as much training as those individuals who respond with the Behavioral Health Unit. So recommendations from this was basically to look at expanding the, um, staffing of the B- Behavioral Health Unit or expand their function. Perhaps a patrol officer who's out and he has encountered someone who is in a mental health crisis, particularly experiencing suicidal ide- ideations, that they can contact a V H U officer and kind of do a telephone consult on that. Um, or some other expanded role of V H U within that if staffing increases are not possible. And then also training, um, crisis intervention team or C I T officers to try and close that gap between our patrol officers, um, or need to do and what that V H, uh, U staff is actually capable of accomplishing in that case. Um, we do strongly support maintaining V H U as a critical component of Salem's response. The co-responder model here with an officer and a mental health professional responding out to individuals in extreme crisis situations like this is one of the best practices across the United States. Um, it's one that we see consistently in those agencies that, um, excel in dealing with mental health crises. And we fully, um, recommend that Salem continue with this and that Salem Police Department continue to recruit those officers who are motivated to join this team, who have the communication skills and the patience to continually intervene with persons in crisis. And our final finding had to do with risk effective responses. Um, they, we found that officers sometimes were responding to what would be considered a high-risk encounter, uh, basically defined as something where we know the person is in crisis mode, maybe suicidal, and there's a report of a weapon, and they were responding without a cover officer. Um, we know that officers, uh, statistically, many times will experience what's called a rescue dynamic where their willing, their, um, desire to try and rescue individuals and help individuals, um, basically overtakes their ability and their, their reasoning as far as considering safety considerations, both for themselves and for that person in crisis. We know that having another officer there often adds additional alternatives to that response capability. We know that individuals who are in crisis sometimes, when they, um, become confrontational with others are less likely to become confrontational if there are additional officers there who will help and provide that backup and that cover and those other alternatives. Um, we also found, although limited, but on a couple of occasions, that it gave us enough concern that we, that we put it in the finding is that there were a few times when some of the specialized resources of the Salem Police Department were not used. And those specialized resources in particular had to do with crisis negotiation teams. Um, where an individual, a crisis negotiator, was called out instead of the entire team. Or where the team probably should have been called out and it was tried, they tried to handle it with patrol officers. So, you know, if we're under utilizing those specialized resources that we have, it means we're not putting forth everything that we can to try and resolve it in the best possible way. And again, this particular finding was limited, but it was enough that it was a concern and we felt like we needed to bring it out. So what are the recommendations? Basically enhancing the policy directives and training. Um, focus on and reinforce the use of cover officers when responding to an incident involving mental health crisis or suicide attempt where the presence of a weapon is likely or suspected. Um, and also extending those same requirements to other high-risk type encounters. Those individuals who may be considering jumping off of a bridge, those individuals who may intend self-harm, whether that be running through traffic and that type of thing, where it's very difficult for one officer to try and deal with the traffic issues as well as trying keeping the individuals who's in crisis safe. And then enhancing policy directives and training, um, which more clearly specify when specialized resources should be deployed and when it's appropriate to deploy them. Uh, in summary, what we found is that across the board, out of the six hundred and sixty cases that we looked at, again comprising almost fifty percent, uh, it was forty-eight percent of all of the ca- the incidents over that five-year period. Um, Salem Police Department was consistent with the best practices throughout the United States. We also noted great improvement from two thousand fifteen all the way through two thousand nineteen. That correlated with the policy changes that were being put in place as a result of the Hammer Agreement. Um, and enhanced training that the officers had seen, had been receiving in the more recent years. And finally, we noted several, um, responses, and they're noted in the reports at the very end, kind of basically under the extra mile. These were situations where intense manpower and coordination was involved across the board from, all the way from the call takers and dispatchers of the communication center to the responding officers, trying to make sure that the person in crisis remains safe and that the community remains safe. Um, and several of those instances are, are brought to light there and were highlighted by members of the assessment team because, again, this was above and beyond what would be expected from an officer responding to someone who is experiencing a suicidal ideation. Um, one particular example, an individual, a veteran who was in crisis and suicidal. And the officer very quickly realized that this person was also homeless. And so prior to taking this person to the hospital, the officer went above and beyond, contacted the Veterans Outreach and found a place for housing for this individual so that when they were released from the hospital, they had a place to stay. Um, other instances where the officers followed up with employers to try and encourage employers to work with their employees when they'd had a suicidal ideation or a crisis. Um, and so those types of things that we really felt were important to highlight some of the extraordinary work that had been done by the Salem Police Department. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, ma'am, so much for your time. I have just, uh, five quick questions for you. Under the terms of the settlement agreement, you were not tasked with examining suicide response by any agency other than Salem Police Department, is that right?
That is correct.
And you were not tasked with investigating whether a civilian-led response unit could be useful in responding to suicide calls, is that right?
That is correct. That was outside of the scope of the, of the requirements of the settlement.
Right, and that's why there's no recommendations, one way or the other, about adding a civilian-led crisis unit to free up Salem Police Department officers for higher acuity calls, correct?
Again, that was outside the scope, and so, yes, you're correct. There were no recommendations made for that.
Right. And your report found, I believe you called it, an over-reliance on the Behavioral Health Unit to respond to certain types of calls that are not normally within the Salem Police Department's purview, is that right?
Yes, in particular with the group home settings, there are different, there appeared to be an over-reliance on um, contacting the Salem Police Department, and even within the community, uh, for individuals who were just wanting a ride to the psychiatric crisis center.
Right. And then, uh, last but not least, uh, you, you also found that there simply wasn't enough, uh, V H U staffing to take care of every single call where someone was expressing some form of suicidal thoughts, is that right?
That was the appearance from the, what we reviewed, and part of that had to do with the uh, number of personnel assigned to V H U and the very vast territory that they cover between the two counties.
Okay, thank you so much. And when you, when you use the term, uh, having this over-reliance on V H U to respond to calls not normally within a police officer's purview, can you explain in layman's terms, what is an example of something outside of their purview in this context?
Certainly. So several of the instances that we reviewed involved, in particular, the one that comes to mind is the group homes. Um, within the group homes, where you obviously have individuals who, um, have behavior issues many times to start with. And so it appeared that many times, if there became some type of a verbal altercation within that group home, that rather than individuals and staff members within the group home taking steps to try to remedy that, the immediate response was to call nine-one-one and request the Salem Police Department respond. Um, I will tell you, that is not something we typically see within other communities. Group homes normally have certain levels and criteria that they will go through prior to contacting the police department.
Thank you so much, Ms. Houston. I appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you very much. Uh, Chief, did you have anything further you wanted to say?
Up to that last point, I would just say that, um, from my understanding, the effectiveness of the V H U with developing relationships with folks they're responding to is the reason why the over-reliance occurred. So what's happening is the group homes are building good relationships with these officers and their qualified mental health professionals. And so they begin to call them as their first line of response because they're doing such a good job um, with, with de-escalating situations and dealing with folks. And so the over-reliance there is not necessarily a bad thing in that sense. It's because of the positive relationships that have been developed that have caused the group home, uh, administrators to just have a hotline to the police department. So we think that they should be handling those things more on their own. And now we're taking a look at way to screen those calls better to try to push that responsibility back to the group homes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, Tom, three D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute uh, grant agreements with the Housing Authority of the City of Salem and Mid- Willamette Valley Community Action Agency.
Second. Second by Lewis.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm all in favor of this. I think this is terrific. And I just want to get, uh, more publicity for this. Um, you know, we are doing, uh, as much as we possibly can to, um, uh, help assist our unsheltered homeless neighbors with, uh, a solution to their problem. Some of it is housing, some of it is, is, uh, in fact, kind of what we were just talking about, about the, you know, crisis. And, uh, so the Salem Housing Authority is going to use money to expand housing voucher program. And the Community Action Agency is going to continue renovation of a motel uh, that was purchased for a temporary shelter. And I'd just like someone from, uh, city staff to kind of expand upon this a little bit. I don't know who that would be.
Kristen.
Good evening again. Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. Um, so these-
So these funds will be used by the Salem Housing Authority to add capacity in their landlord navigator program. So these will be individuals that will be dedicated to doing outreach to the landlords, to providing them with assistance and support, helping connect our voucher holders with landlords. I mean, we'll have a lot of individuals that will receive vouchers and then have a very difficult time finding a residence because of the price point. So these positions will assist with making those connections between voucher holders and the landlords. They will also help provide additional capacity with doing inspections of the different properties for ATRAP and voucher programs. So then some amount of the funds will also be used to help stabilize our housing rental assistance program clients that entered into the program during COVID. We had, you know, a number of people that enrolled in that program during COVID. And the shutdowns just provided some additional complications to reaching a point where they're stabilized and transitioning to the voucher programs. So this will assist with those individuals as well to help them make that transition to vouchers and into permanent rental properties.
Ms. Rutherford, could you tell everybody from where this money comes?
This money is, this is our ARPA funding, or your federal funding that's flowing into the city. As you, Josh just popped up, he can give us more specific information about the source.
Good evening, Josh Igleson, Internal Chief Financial Officer. The funding is actually appropriated with the Oregon Legislature.
Oh, sorry.
These are two pass-through grants. We're simply passing them on through to the Mid Willamette Community Action Agency and the S H A.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is a great program, and I appreciate all the work the staff is doing to move this forward.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, could the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy is absent. Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Information reports. Counselor Leung.
I just wanted to make a comment about the Information Report 60. Is this the time where I could say something?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First and foremost, I really want to acknowledge the amount of work that Mr. John Miller had done specifically with the developer in this area. And this is an area that has a lot of trees, a total of 693 trees altogether. And on this subdivision, 39% of them are actually going to be preserved, or 270 trees altogether. And of those 423 trees, 32 were identified as significant oak trees. And 29 out of the 32 are going to be kept. And what I appreciated about this amount of time and detail that was provided within this report showing that Mr. Miller's willingness to try and preserve as many trees as possible, while also increasing the number of housing within this area. I noticed that there were 51 conditions, which was an extreme high amount of conditions. But when I read through those conditions, it made sense in being able to develop in ways to still encourage a community space, but also had open space as well as opportunities for still having green, green, what's the word I'm looking for, coverage. And so, you know, even though we are losing quite a bit of trees, I'm also seeing the amount of care that he put in to make this possible. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you. Mr. Miller has a long history of being just a really outstanding developer. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I would love to talk about the ice storm activities report that we got from staff and I, I guess I have a question for Mylan, if he's available or on the phone or whoever is taking questions about this.
Psychetcal is.
Oh, hi, Mark. Thank you so much for taking my questions. When I read the report, I realized just how many different challenges staff had had with the technical side of things and with support services. Has, it was hard for me to gain this information from the report, but has all of that been addressed? And are we set up right now with better support systems for our staff should this happen again?
I can answer the last part. And then Mylan is actually on the, on the, on the meeting. But to answer the last part of your question, yes, we are much better prepared for this winter, especially with the technical aspects of a response. The, the ability to utilize our G I S, our geographic information systems, and the field applications is, is much better than we had this time last year. So, so yes, we're much better prepared, but I would go ahead and let Mylan respond to the rest of your question.
I'm sorry, Mark. This is Courtney. I don't think that he's with us.
That's okay. I, I also can, I'll ask you this question, Mark, and maybe you won't be able to answer, but that's all right. At least I'll get it out there. It seemed to me that from reading the report, it looks like we need to invest more in inspectors and in tree workers. Would you agree with that statement? It seems like we're still overrun by work orders right now, this far out, almost a year since the storm.
Well, I think our urban forestry program could always use more resources. We are Tree City USA. We have a lot of trees. But, you know, we have to also balance that with the needs of the general fund. Parks Operations lives in the general fund and, and all those needs have to be balanced. So, yes, if the opportunity to have more resources is able to come into the urban forestry program, that'd be great. We would love to have a second full-time in-house tree crew. So that would be wonderful if we could do that. But we have been able to take advantage of some really good contractors, and, and they've been able to help us out quite a bit.
Yeah, it seems from the report that there was a lot of support from the companies here locally, and I want to thank them as well for all of their work, as well as our dedicated staff. And then last question for you is that I know that every year we get a report on tree canopy. Do you know when that's coming out this next year?
I'm afraid I don't, but I can check with Patricia Farrell. She's the one that'd be producing that in Parks Planning. And we could, we could get back to with that, into that information.
Great, thank you so much for your help with this tonight.
All right, thank you.
Hey, any further information? Report questions or issues? Okay. Okay, we'll go to first readings. Amy, do you do these? I can't remember. Do you read these?
Yes, I will, and then someone can make a motion.
All right.
So the first one, Ordinance Bill Number 1521, An Ordinance Declaring Certain Territory Located at 6565 Sunnyside Road Southeast, Annexed to the City of Salem Prescribing Zoning and Withdrawing the Territory From the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Counselor Leung? You have a motion for me on that one?
Move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Trevor Phillips. Any discussion? Okay. Yes, Jim?
Yeah, I'm sorry to do this, folks, but my machine just let me know I've got 2% power left and it's plugged in. So if I go away, it's not that I'm leaving, it's just that I'm being disconnected.
Hey, great, thank you. Okay, let's let's have Amy call the roll.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy is absent. Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. 7.1B.
Ordinance Bill Number 1621, An Ordinance Declaring and Proclaiming Certain Territory Located at 4120 Fisher Road Northeast and Adjacent Lands Northeast Annexed to the City of Salem Prescribing Zoning and Withdrawing the Territory from the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District and Marion County Fire District Number One.
Counselor Gonzalez, do you have a motion on this one?
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Any discussion? Okay, Amy, would you call the roll?
Yes. Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy absent. Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. 7.1C.
Ordinance Bill Number 1721, An Ordinance Relating to Land Use Amending SRC 64.025.
Okay, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Lewis. Any discussion? Okay, would you call the roll?
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy absent. Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes, and we'll go then to a second reading.
Ordinance Bill Number 1421, An Ordinance Relating to the City of Salem Board Boundaries Amending SRC 11.231 and 11.232 and Repealing SRC 11.233, .234, .235, .236, .237, .238, and .239. Counselor Hoy is absent. Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Is there any further business? Okay, then we are adjourned.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.